Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ed Flynn. I'm the City Council President. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citycouncil-tv. I'd like to ask my colleagues and those in attendance to please silence their phones and electronic devices. Please also be respectful and do not disrupt the meeting while you are here. If you are disruptive, you will be asked to leave, and if you fail to comply, you will be escorted out. Please also note that according to City Council rules, there are no signs allowed in the chamber. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the road to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Bart, Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Laura, Counselor Luizhen, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, and Counselor Worrell.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. This week's clergy is Courtney Bennett from the Boston United Pentecostal Church invited by Counselor Brian Worrell. Counselor Brian Worrell, would you like to come up to the podium to introduce our clergy today?
Thank you, Council President, and great to see so many faces in the people's room today. I'm happy that you guys are joining us. Pastor Courtney Bennett has been a friend of the family since kindergarten? Second grade. I've known Courtney since second grade. Pastor Courtney and First Lady Laura Bennett recently planted a church in Quincy, Mass, while still serving as assisted pastor at Boston United Pentecostal Church in Brighton. Reverend Courtney has a strong history of ministry and business leadership. He began his ministry in 2004 as a youth ministry pastor at Boston United Pentecostal Church. Reverend Bennett was ordained with the United Pentecostal International in 2012. In 2013, he was elected youth president of the Massachusetts and Rhode Island churches of the UPCI. He has worked in the community of Boston mentoring youth as a licensed social worker and helping them reach their spiritual potential without reaches like 180 degrees to Christ in an organization built to uplift teens and young adults. Pastor Courtney and First Lady Laura Bennett also run local programs such as GGM, Getting Girls Equipped and Mentored, an armor bearer young men group. He holds a Bachelor of Science degree with Salem State University and is currently pursuing his MDIV at Liberty University. Reverend and First Lady Bennett have three children who serve alongside them in ministry. No further introduction, Courtney Bennett.
Thank you for having me here today. It's a pleasure to be here. I am from the city of Boston and been here all my life, and I appreciate all that you guys do. When I look across and I see, what I see is leaders. And what I understand from leadership, something is required of you. And one of the things we have to understand in this day and age, people are not satisfied with leadership as it is currently constituted. It is that jump over somebody to get ahead mentality. But when I look at the Good Book, I find that Jesus was a leader. We find that He had 12 individuals originally following Him and after that many more. But what we call Him, we call Him a servant leader. He is a leader. He was a leader who led by serving. Many people say that without vision, the people perish, and that is a word from the Scripture. But many times, leaders focus on the vision, and they forget that in order to achieve the vision, one has to work on the mission. We can focus on being called to doing a work and looking towards what is going to be, but nothing will ever be without working on the mission. We can look at the Scriptures and we find a young man by the name of David. He was called, he was anointed to be the next king, yet it took him nearly 30 years to become king over the people in which he was promised. But that entire time, he did not twiddle his thumbs, doing nothing. He worked on the mission. And I encourage everyone here, as you begin to work on plans to develop things in this wonderful city, that you work and focus on the mission, which is to help those who are in need, which is to service our community. I know many of you have worked hard, and you have great visions for the city. But in working to get to that vision, let's not forget the day-to-day business of doing the mission. We're going to pray. I don't want to take much of your time today because I know your time is precious and you have things to do. So if we can stand, we're going to pray together as a group, and we're going to ask God to touch this assembled group here today so that you would remember that it's not just the vision that you are trying to achieve, but the mission, which is to help those who are less than yourself. So let's pray. God of Abraham, Isaac, and God of Jacob, we thank you for the opportunity that we have to work the work which you have sent us and called us to do. We ask right now, God, that in the midst of this council, that you would give them vision, Lord, but also help them, Lord, to understand that they are here not for themselves, but for the people in which they serve. We ask God that they would do everything in their power, everything that they can possibly think of to serve the community in which they have been tasked to do. We ask, Lord, that your hands would be upon them, that your spirit would continually guide them. We pray for wisdom. We pray for knowledge and understanding. We ask God that you would put your hand upon them and give them a special anointing for such a time as this. We pray, God, that your hands, Lord, would lead them in directions in which they need to be, at the place and time in which they need to be, so that you could use them for the glory of your kingdom. We ask that they would have an understanding that they are here by your allowance, and that they are here by the allowance of the people who have elected them for such a time as this. We pray, God, that you would use them, use their voices, use their intuition and their intelligence, Lord, to build up this city, the city of Boston, which is a city that is placed upon a hill. We thank you today for your love and for your kindness. In your precious name, we pray. Amen.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and equal with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please reflect the record that Counselor Royo is present, Counselor Mejia is present, and Counselor Fernandez Anderson is present. We have two separate presentations today. One is from Counselor Mejia, and the other is Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Mejia will be recognizing a group, Haydn Jean-Louis, who is BPS Boston Citywide Cross Country Team head coach. Counselor Mejia, please come to the podium and introduce your guest, please.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, President Flynn, for giving us an opportunity to recognize a beloved coach in the city of Boston. And I'd like to, before I begin, would like to ask one of my teammates, who actually was the one that introduced me to coach, and his story. So I'm going to ask Sarah Lawton, who is my community partnership liaison, to come here because we would not be celebrating his work had it not been for the story that you shared with me, and I want you to be present as a result of that. So come on up. And as Sarah makes her way up here, I just wanted to acknowledge that Sarah was the first woman to be a part of the citywide CrossFit team here in the city of Boston, and was the only girl for a long time. And she was a trailblazer then and continues to be. So let's honor who we are here today to gather with. So today, we are featuring our coach, Hatim Jean-Louis, who is the son of Anne Marie, and Ush tes Jean-Louis, father of Subi Bundu Jean-Louis, and husband to Petunia, Petruvi- Pa- I'm going to say this one right. Petunia, Petruvnia, got it? Okay. Jean-Louis, we would like to recognize your service and commitment to Boston Public School students, athletes throughout your career. Hatim, also known as Coach H, is a Haitian American born and raised in Boston, Massachusetts. Since 2013, Hatim has served as an assistant volunteer track coach for Excel High School, a head coach for the former West Roxbury Academy, and most recently, Boston Latin Academy, Gold Dragons. During the cross-country season, however, Hatim served as the head coach for the Boston Citywide Cross Country Team, which unites all of Boston Public School, high school students onto one cross-country team. So imagine that, citywide. Under his leadership, Hatim led Boston Public School students all across the city of Boston in their strong effort to achieve the highest honors in school, track, and field and cross-country. In his career as the head coach for BPS Cross Country, Hatim led the team towards its first invitational win in 30 years by taking the Big Wave Team title in 2018. While coaching indoor and outdoor track within Boston Public Schools, Hatim has supported and produced over 60 Boston Public School citywide championships, two state championships, four City of Boston MVPs, and three undefeated track and field seasons. Okay? Now that is why we're here today. In addition to his athlete accolades, Coach H is a former state champion in the 600 meters at Randolph High, was recently awarded the Massachusetts State Track and Coaches Association Outdoor Track and Field Coach of the Year of Division III. While also being a full-time coach, Hatim has served the members of the Boston Teachers' Union as a benefit specialist, having recently been promoted to office manager this last May. In addition to working for the BTU, Hatim serves as a correspondent for the Bay State Running, offering commentary interviews and previews of the state's best high school athletes. Hatim also has the honor of serving as an executive board member of the MSTCA since 2019. Every day, Coach H reminds his student athletes that dreams are tangible goals, emphasizing the need to put work and effort into every aspect of their life, and as a mentor to most of his athletes. Coach H is the epitome of what a coach should be, a passionate and driven leader who is continuously advocating for the betterment of his student athletes. As a result, many of his athletes, BPS alums, have graduated and gone on to lead successful college careers. I hope this citation serves to recognize Hatim and his work, and the work of active Boston parents, teachers, and administrators who supported him and the citywide team and their endeavors. I look forward to seeing what Hatim and the student athletes of the Boston Citywide Cross Country Team will achieve over the coming years. And I have to say, just spending a little bit of time with those who are here to celebrate him, it was just so beautiful because every person he introduced me to played a role in his journey. And I'm so glad that you are all here, able to participate in this process as we honor Hatim for his work. Hatim, please, come here, get your award. Now, just a point of clarification, there were other women athletes, but Sarah was the first captain. So I just want to clarify that, for the record.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. I usually start off practice with the word of the day, and the word of the day today is example. Bear with me one moment, please. So examples. Good afternoon. I'm sincerely humbled to be recognized and honored for my civic duty. As a coach, I'm an extension of the families that we serve here in the Commonwealth. I'm the mirror reflection of well wishes. I'm the echo of morals and values throughout our city. I believe that sports is a powerful tool, and I believe in the coaching craft is a unique opportunity to connect, inspire, and teach and influence the next generation. But I didn't get here by myself, and I would like to acknowledge the people who helped me get here. I stand on a lot of shoulders. In 1963, my grandfather, Montus Jean Louis migrated to the city of Boston seeking for a better opportunity. For my father and my four aunts, Elsie, Ketley, Lydia, and Milka. My mother migrated to the city in 1970. Those are my first examples of leadership. My grandfather, working two odd jobs, established his family on the principles of education and faith. While working two jobs, my grandfather was a pillar in creating the first opportunity where Haitian immigrants could seek for a place to worship by establishing the first Haitian Baptist church in my grandparents' living room in 1969. My grandparents were my examples. Unfortunately, my grandmother, I never got to meet her, so she passed when my father was 19. But my grandfather pushed his children to graduate from Boston Public Schools, when my aunts graduated from Jamaica Plain High School, as well as my father, which is now Boston English. My mother, when she reached the state, Haitian immigrant herself, she graduated from RCC, then she later on graduated from UMass Boston, as well as my brother graduated from UMass Boston, and he was a graduate from Boston English. So the city of Boston has been the foundation and the grassroots of my family structure. So I'm honored today to be here. Growing up, I watched my father in 1986 as our city dealt with a different pandemic. The pandemic in 1986 was the AIDS virus, HIV. And I watched my father create the first soup kitchen out of one of the local Haitian churches, where my aunt Lydia was the manager, and my aunt Milka would do the back work, the backend stuff. My cousin Pierre, my brother, my older brother Lincoln, we would be delivery drivers, but really, my cousin Pierre and I would drop off food to the AIDS patients in the early 80s, late 80s, early 90s. Dropping off food to those AIDS patients, that's where I learned the human interaction, seeing the joy of those people because I would be delivering a food that'd be nourishing for them because they may not get that meal. After a morning of delivering, my father would drop my cousin Pierre, and now he'd bring us to the Play State area, White Stadium, because my Uncle Gary, his best friend, was a teacher at Boston English, and he retired as the Jeremiah Burke Assistant Principal. But Uncle Gary was my first coach. As a soccer coach, Uncle Gary and my dad would be warming up the high school players during the weekend, weekday, and I would run around Franklin Park Play State with them and my cousin Pierre. And then on the weekends, my father and Uncle Gary would be coaching a semi-professional international league that was at White Stadium. So years later, the same place that I had my fondest memories as a child would be a place that I would go on to compete in high school, to 40 years later serve the community. So I truly believe that I'm a son of Franklin Park. All my greatest, fondest memories have been in that park. But like I said, the word of the day is the example. My aunts, my uncles, my grandfather set the example in community service, why it's important to give back to the community. I never knew where I would be if I'd be doing this, receiving these accolades, but it started with those people. So I want to acknowledge my aunts, my father, my grandfather, and my mom for their hard work. When I got to high school, my high school coaches were very instrumental for me. I was a very talented, gifted runner, and I had some issues with behavior, but they were very patient with me, and they challenged me to be great. So I'm very grateful for, rest in peace, Coach Sullivan from Randolph High School, Garrett Powell, and Robert McCready from Zavarian. Fast forward 2013, I bump into a man that's in the room. His name is Avery Isdale. He's the citywide athletic director. Avery, in 2013, we started to build a rapport. By 2015, I asked Avery if we could bring back cross-country because I think it was important because it was so instrumental for me growing up. Avery said, sure, why not? Let's have a skeleton team. When I first started, some of them are here, some of those athletes, I'm standing by one of them right now. And I just wanted to be the coach that I needed. And we started in 2015. We were dead last in Massachusetts. So I was motivated. I was like, we got to work harder and harder. So the next year, we were second to last. We moved up one spot. But by 2019, we were a top 25 team in Massachusetts. And now, today, 2022, I'm looking forward in the next two weeks for us to make history, to be the first BPS team to make the state meet. Over the years, I've had many great- All right. Long and short, I want to thank everyone that's came out today. You have been instrumental in my career. And in short, to all my student athletes, past, present, and future, dreams are tangible goals, continue to work hard, and what I said 10 years ago happened, I said that you guys are making history. For every time we run in a race, for every practice, for every win and loss, we're making history. Today is a testament of that. I thank you guys and the families I serve.
We have another presentation that's going to take place now. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, will you please come to the podium and recognize Iris Calderon? Did she recognize this Counselor Fernandez Anderson?
Actually, they're trying to locate this Calderon in the building. That'd be much appreciated.
That's not a problem.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez Anderson. We do have a third presentation. It's a presentation sponsored by Counselor Luizhen. It's the AKA Sorority Day here in City Hall. Counselor Luizhen, will you please come to the podium?
Thank you very much, President Flynn. Good morning, everyone. I'm Counselor Luizhen, and I'm so excited to be here sponsoring AKA Day in City Hall. But before I get to that, I also just wanted to congratulate Mr. Jean Louis, and I want Coach Jean Louis, and I also want to say that I had the honor of honoring your father, Dr. Eustache Jean Louis, this weekend at the Haitian Americans United for all of the incredible work you did during the HIV/AIDS epidemic when Haitians were being stigmatized, and you were really rebuffing and working on that. So I say thank you, merci un peu, from the bottom of my heart. Thank you. Okay, but now for the reason I'm on the mic is because of all of these lovely ladies in pink and green here, okay? I want to say a warm, heartfelt welcome to the Psi Omega chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, the oldest graduate chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated in New England, which was established in February 1926 in the spirit of sisterhood, scholarship, and service. The Psi Omega chapter has had 95 years of remarkable and continuous service in the greater Boston area and extensive community engagement. The Psi Omega chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated was chartered in Boston, Massachusetts in 1926. The Psi Omega chapter has 200 professional, college-educated women that are actively engaged in implementing the international programs of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Service and sisterhood have been the cornerstone of the sorority since its incorporation in 1908. With the theme soaring to greater heights of service and sisterhood, the 2022 to 2026 international administration of the sorority seeks to build upon the sorority's rich legacy of service by empowering our families, building our economic wealth, enhancing our environment, and advocating for social justice. Uplifting the community is at the core of what the Psi Omega chapter of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated does here in Boston. The Psi Omega service activities have included, among other things, providing scholarships to African-American high school students pursuing higher education, supporting Black-owned businesses with shop and sips, HBCU awareness at the BPS College Career and STEM Fair, uplifting and supporting breast cancer warriors and survivors at the Making Strides Breast Cancer Walk, the Precious Pearls Debutante Program, which includes development programs that encourage positive self-image and high moral and ethical standards for young women. I need a new hand. COVID-19 Education Panel Program for the Community- I need a new hand, COVID-19 Education Panel Program for the community, voter registration education activities for the community, and Affordable Housing Education Panel Program for the community. We had an amazing panel last night that included a lot of the sororors and folks from the city of Boston and advocates like Sheree Mills, Laquisa Burke, Michelle McCarthy from BPDA, and the engagement from the sororors was just through the roof. I feel confident that together, working in partnership, that we are going to be able to solve some of this city's most difficult issues. AKA Day at City Hall seeks to build valuable relationships between members of Psi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated and their local elected officials. Psi Omega Chapter held its first AKA Day at City Hall in 2017, and the event was sponsored by then-Councilor Ayanna Pressley. The following year, City Council President Andrea Campbell served as a sponsor for the event, and I am proud to continue the tradition and sponsor this year. My office had a wonderful time working alongside you to make this happen. I want to acknowledge so many who are here. I want to acknowledge first the chapter's Connections and Social Action Committee chaired by Raquel Webster, and also the Psi Omega Chapter's President Kathy, and we'll hear from her as well, Vice President Aleah Salone. Lastly, I want to thank everyone for coming here and making today a success. So I have a citation, so if we can have both Kathy and Raquel come forward. So it reads, "The City of Boston and City Council, official resolution presented by Counselor-at-Large Rudy Louis Jean, be it resolved that the Boston City Council extends its congratulations to Psi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated in recognition of 95 years of remarkable and continuous service in the greater Boston area and extensive community engagement. The Psi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated is the oldest graduate chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. And be it further resolved that the Boston City Council extends its best wishes for continued success, that this resolution be duly signed by the President of the City Council and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clark of the City of Boston." Thank you.
We appreciate this recognition. I'm Kathy Lucas. I serve as the President of Psi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. The Psi Omega Chapter is so grateful to have this opportunity to take this recognition in front of you. I like the members of the Psi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha to join us up here on stage because I don't do this alone. For almost 100 years, we have been serving in the greater Boston area, in the arenas that you've heard a little bit earlier. We are so proud to be highly educated college women that continue to give back in service and sisterhood to those in our community and the surrounding areas. We work very hard in this area to make sure that others have the opportunity to continue their dreams and their goals, and specifically, young women of color in engaging in secondary education. So again, Counselor, President, we are appreciative to be here and accept this, and I am going to ask my sororors to say, "Skiwi." Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. And if my council colleagues can join me for a photo?
Thank you. Thank you.
We do have one final presentation that I'm going to ask my colleague, City Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, to come to the podium and recognize the person that we're going to celebrate today. And just as a reminder to my colleagues, each colleague is able to bring forth two people at separate times to be recognized in the year. So I know some of my colleagues still have an opportunity to do that as well, so just a friendly reminder. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson?
Thank you, Counsel President Flynn. In 1999, former Counselor Charles Yancey initiated a resolution to commence a sister-city relationship with the Ghanaian city of Sekondi Takoradi in 1999. The resolution passed unanimously, and two years later, in 2001, the formal signing of the resolution documents occurred and went into effect. The 21st anniversary of this unique and enriching relationship is Wednesday, today, October 19, 2022. Back in 1999, Counsel Yancey met with officials from Sekondi Takoradi to discuss the establishment of a sister-city partnership between our two cities. One thing that Counsel Yancey constantly pointed out at the time was that even though Boston had sister-city relationships with cities in Asia, Europe, and Australia, the city of Boston did not have such a relationship with any city in the entire continent of Africa. Sekondi Takoradi shares some similarities with our city and a population roughly equivalent to ours. The predominantly language spoken in the city, English, is English, though, like Boston, there are a variety of other languages spoken. Sekondi Takoradi is also one of the most industrialized cities in Ghana, and the city is rich in natural resources such as gold, diamonds, and iron ore. I'd like to think that the father of independent Ghana, Kwame Nkrumah, is smiling down on both of our sister cities today while there is still much work to be done to resist the remnants of colonialism and imperialism that impact Africa. Our partnering with Sekondi Takoradi is a nice antidote to the legacy of that horrific legacy. I thank Counsel Yancey for spearheading this important work in 1999 and happy to recognize the 21st anniversary of our partnership. We look forward to many more years of integral connections with the people of Sekondi Takoradi, the nation of Ghana, and the rich and beautiful continent of Africa that they are located within. I'd like to bring on Counselor Yancey for just two minutes. I do, I remember meeting Counsel Yancey, I'm not trying to age people, but when I was 15, I would, I worked for Roxbury Multi-Service Center, and I would invite Counsel Yancey to all of my events and youth stuff. And he, Diana, I remember Senator Wilkinson, Mayor Menino, everyone would come. And Counsel Yancey is a poet, as we know, a philosopher, that I'm giving you this title. But we have a brief moment if we can hear your statements. It's an honor. Thank you so much.
21 years ago, President Flynn, I had your title. And I served in the City Council since 1984, and like Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, sit in the office once held by Boston City Councilor Raymond L. Flynn. So this is a very emotional moment for me, and I'm wondering if we have any representatives from Ghana in the audience at this time? No, they're not here. But we have taken the opportunity granted by our good Counselor Tanya Fernandez-Anderson to recognize what took place 21 years ago when a resolution was passed unanimously by the Boston City Council. Counselor Michael Flaherty was my Vice President at the time, so I want to publicly acknowledge his support of the sister-city relationship. And I also want to say that this was not the first time that the Boston City Council took a position involving the continent of Africa. It was 1984 when this body initiated the divestment movement for major cities across the United States of America by passing a resolution which required the city to divest of any assets invested in companies supporting the apartheid regime, a Nazi-like regime that was taking place in South Africa. It was this body, it was initiated by the City Council, and in his wisdom, it was signed by the then-mayor of Boston, Raymond L. Flynn. So I want to tell Mayor Flynn's son, President Flynn, incidentally, his father never made it to the presidency of the Boston City Council, but his son did. So I acknowledge this, I want to give a round of applause to the Flynn family for all their great work. So on October 19, 2001, the mayor of Boston, the mayor of Sekondi Takoradi, and the equivalent of the president of the Assembly in Sekondi Takoradi, in the Parkman House, signed an agreement that began exchange programs, it began a relationship which continues to this day, although it's not as active today as it was some 20 years ago. So I thought it was altogether fitting that we take this a few minutes to acknowledge that, to tell the people of Africa, and specifically of our sister-city, Sekondi Takoradi, that we have not forgotten you and that we look forward to build on the foundation that was established by the Boston City Council. And I have to say, as I look out to these wonderful leaders in our city, that the City Council has never been more diverse and perhaps never more talented, with the exception, perhaps, no, I won't even qualify it. This is certainly the most diverse and talented city council that we've had in the history of this city. And you know it, I know it, the city should know it, and you make sacrifices every day, you don't work nine to five, you're on call 24/7, you're at meetings, you're fighting on policy issues and laboring seemingly alone, but believe me, roughly 700,000 people depend upon each and every one of you every day to be their advocate and to make sure that the city responds to their interests. Whenever I see an audience like this, I said, you know, you should stand up straight and be proud, act like you own the city of Boston, because you do, and you have more than 18,000 people working in your interests, but your chief policymakers are in the Boston City Council, working with the mayor of Boston. So I will communicate with our liaison, we have a member of the BOCEDA, the Boston-Sekondi Takoradi Association, going to Ghana this afternoon. I will let him know of the action taken by the Boston City Council on October 19, 2022, to reaffirm our commitment to develop this sister-city relationship that began more than 21 years ago. God bless you, and thank you for this opportunity to reminisce. Thank you very much.
Could my colleagues please join us for a picture? Thank you, Counsel President Yancey. I have known Counsel President Yancey for 40 years, and he's made an exceptional contribution to the city of Boston. Thank you, Counsel President Yancey. Now we're on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing, no discussion on the matter, the chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you, the minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Communications from her on to the mayor. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1242.
Document number 1242, message disapproving and ordnance amending City of Boston Code Ordinances 5, Section 5-5.10, regarding salary categories for certain offices and City of Boston Code Ordinances, Chapter 2, Section 2-8.1, salary of city councilors, and Section 2-7.11, salary of the mayor. Document number 0920, passed by the City Council, October 6, 2022.
Thank you. Document 1242 will be signed for further action and be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1243?
Document number 1243, message in order for your approval and order amending City of Boston Code Ordinances 5, Section 5-5.10, regarding salary categories for certain offices, and City of Boston Code Ordinances, Chapter 2, Section 2-8.1, salary of city councilors, and Section 2-7.11, salary of the mayor. Filed in the office of the city clerk on October 17, 2022.
Thank you. Document 1243 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1244 and 1245?
Document number 1244, message in order for your approval and order to reduce the fiscal year '23 appropriation for the reserves for collective bargaining by $31,72,029 to provide funding for the Boston Public Schools for the fiscal year costs contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston School Committee and the Boston Teachers' Union, BTU, Local 66, AFT, Massachusetts. And document number 1245, message in order for a supplemental appropriation order for the Boston Public Schools for fiscal year '23 in the amount of $37,674,337 to cover the fiscal year '23 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston School Committee and the Boston Teachers' Union, BTU, Local 66, AFT, Massachusetts. The terms of the contracts are September 1, 2021, through August 31, 2024. The major provisions of the contracts include base wage increases of 2.5% in September 2022, September 2023, as well as other cost items including inclusion reform implementation. Filed in the office of the city clerk on October 17, 2022.
Thank you. Documents 1244 and 1245 will be referred to the Committee on the City Services, Innovation, Technology. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1246?
Document number 1246, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant from the Boston Planning and Development Agency in an amount not to exceed $4,601,589, which will be allocated to the mayor's Office of Arts and Culture for its work on public arts and culture efforts.
Thank you. Document 1246 will refer to the Committee on Arts, Culture, Special Events. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1247 and 1248, please?
Document number 1247, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $441,825 in the form of a grant. the amount of $441,825 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 22 Burn Justice Assistance Grant Local Allocation awarded by the United States Department of Justice to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund a domestic violence management analyst at the Family Justice Center, a hub and center of responsibility coordinator, and a technology coordinator for multiple data collection, reporting, and records management systems. And docket number 1248, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $315,365 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 2022 DNA Capacity Enhancement and Backlaw Reduction Program awarded by the United States Department of Justice to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund two criminalist positions, lab supplies, equipment, and continuing education expenses.
Thank you. Docket 1247 and 1248 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1249.
Docket number 1249, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $167,104 in the form of a Massachusetts Electric Vehicle Incentive Program Grant from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection to be administered by the Transportation Department. The grant will fund the procurement and deployment of Level 3 DC fast charge electric vehicle charging stations in Alston, Dorchester, High Park, and Rosendale, be available to the general public for 24 hours a day.
Thank you. Docket 1249 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1250.
Docket number 1250, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $49,500 in the form of a grant for the Ruggles Corridor Art Project awarded by the Boston Housing Authority to be administered by the Office of Arts and Culture. The grant will fund the design of the Ruggles Corridor Public Art Project in Roxbury.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Coletta, Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events. Councilor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. As Chair of the Arts and Culture Committee, I'm seeking suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1250, which is a message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $49,500 for a grant to fund the Ruggles Corridor Art Project. This grant will fund the design of the Ruggles Corridor Public Art Project in Roxbury. And I want to be sure to give a special shout out to my colleague, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, for her work in this space in fiercely advocating for the artery in Roxbury. My understanding is that this grant is separate from those efforts, but she initially came up with the idea, and this will nonetheless help supplement enhancing the vibrancy of District 7. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Coletta seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1250. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1251 to 1256.
Docket number 1251, message transmitting certain information under Section 17F relative to 1905 Center Street and 1911 Center Street. Docket number 1036, passed by the City Council on August 31st, 2022. Docket number 1252, message transmitting certain information under Section 17F relative to the Rental Relief Fund. Docket number 1190, passed by the Council on September 28th, 2022. Docket number 1253, message transmitting certain information under Section 17F regarding retail residential kitchens. Docket number 1191, passed by the Council on September 28th, 2022. Docket number 1254, message transmitting certain information under Section 17F relative to Small Business Relief Fund. Docket number 1192, passed by the Council on September 28th, 2022. Docket number 1255, message transmitting certain information under Section 17F relative to financial assistance for homeownership programs. Docket number 1193, passed by the Council on September 28th, 2022. Docket number 1256, message transmitting certain information under Section 17F relative to Senior Save Program. Docket number 1194, passed by the Council on September 28th, 2022.
Thank you. Docket 1251 to 1256 will be placed on file. Petitions, memorials, Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1257.
Docket number 1257, petition of We Drive You for a license to operate motor vehicles for the carriage of passengers for hire over certain streets in Boston.
Thank you. Docket 1257 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1258, please.
Docket number 1258, communication was received from Council President Ed Flynn calling for the election of the Assistant City Clerk for the city of Boston on October 19, 2022.
Thank you. The docket will be placed on file. This docket is related to the election of an Assistant City Clerk. As you know, the City Council would need to elect a new city Assistant Clerk as we have a vacancy. Having posted an open position for Assistant City Clerk for the city of Boston, the City Council received 17 total applications, of which six applications were interviewed by the Rules Committee. Qualifications for the Assistant City Clerk position include knowledge of city departmental operations, parliamentary procedures, and local and state laws pertaining to the work of city departments and the City Council. Given her experience not only with all of the requirements of the job post, but specifically in the role of Assistant Clerk for the city of Boston, and her professionalism in longstanding public service, I would be recommending Darcy Beecham for the position of Assistant City Clerk for a term ending February 2025. I'd like to now move to elect an Assistant City Clerk. Is there a second?
Second.
Pursuant to Section 17C of the city charter, I will now ask the City Clerk to call the roll so that each City Council can say the name of the person that they choose. Mr. Clerk, please, please take, please take a roll.
Quick point, Mr. Chair. Can we say the name again, so we can say it correctly?
Thank you, Council Baker. Darcy Beecham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council Baker. Mr. Clerk, would you take a roll call of this election, please?
Councilor Royo.
Darcy Beecham.
Councilor Royo, Darcy Beecham. Councilor Baker.
Darcy Beecham.
Councilor Baker, Darcy Beecham. Councilor Bark.
Darcy Beecham.
Councilor Bark, Darcy Beecham. Councilor Brayden.
Darcy Beecham.
Councilor Brayden, Darcy Beecham. Councilor Coletta.
Darcy Beecham.
Councilor Coletta, Darcy Beecham. Councilor Fernandez-Anderson.
Darcy Beecham.
Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, Darcy Beecham. Councilor Flaherty.
Darcy Beecham.
Councilor Flaherty, Darcy Beecham. Councilor Flynn.
Darcy Beecham.
Councilor Flynn, Darcy Beecham. Councilora. Councilor Uzien.
Darcy Beecham.
Councilor Uzien, Darcy Beecham. Councilor Mejia.
Darcy Beecham.
Councilor Mejia, Darcy Beecham. Councilor Murphy.
Darcy Beecham.
Councilor Murphy, Darcy Beecham. And Councilor Roel.
Darcy Beecham.
Councilor Roel, Darcy Beecham.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Darcy Beecham received 12 votes, is now the new Assistant City Clerk.[1142.44][1142.44](APPLAUSE). Assistant Clerk, would you like to join us? And, Mr. Clerk, can you reflect the record that City Council Baker is present? Congratulations, Darcy.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1259 to 1263, please?
Docket number 1259, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Lotika S. Pintal as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Committee for a term expiring July 1st, 2024. Docket number 1260, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Ashley Groffenberger as a trustee of the Boston Common Maintenance Trust Fund for a term expiring January 12, 2024. Docket number 1261, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Ashley Groffenberger as chairperson of the Boston Common Maintenance Trust Fund for a term expiring January 12, 2024. Docket number 1262, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Ashley Groffenberger as a trustee of the Franklin Park Maintenance Trust Fund for a term expiring January 12, 2024. Docket number 1263, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Ashley Groffenberger as chairperson of the Franklin Park Maintenance Trust Fund for a term expiring January 12, 2024. Docket number 1...
Sorry. Yeah, thank, thank you. Dockets 1259 to 1263 will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, please read dockets 1264 to 1268, please.
Docket number 1264, communication was received from the city clerk transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for City Council action on the designation of petition number 266.19, the Tylenol House, Dorchester, Mass., in effect after November 6, 2022, if not acted upon. Docket number 1265, communication was received from the city clerk transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for a City Council action on the designation of the petition number 274.21, Mount Calvary Holy Church Congregation, Chara Tiflo Synagogue, Roxbury, Mass., in effect after November 13, 2022, if not acted upon. Docket number 1266, communication was received from the city clerk transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for City Council action on the designation of the petition number 214.05, plus at Sacrament Complex, Jamaica Plain, Mass., in effect after November 13, 2022, if not acted upon. And docket number 1267, communication was received from the city clerk transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for City Council action on the designation of the petition number 261.21, Frederick Air Mansion Interior, Back Bay, Mass., in effect after November 14, 2022, if not acted upon. Docket number 1268, communication was received from the city clerk transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for City Council action on the designation of the petition number 269.20, the Howe Kingsley House, Dorchester, Mass., in effect after November 14, 2022, if not acted upon.
Thank you. Docket 1263 to 1268 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Reports of committees, Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1019 and 1020, please. I don't have them. 72. Okay. Yeah, okay. Okay. Mr. Clerk, we're on to dockets 1269, 1270, 1271, and 1272.
Docket number 1269, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979, relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of September 14, 2022. Docket number 1270, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979, relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon the City Council at its meeting of September 21st, 2022. Docket number 1271, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979, relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of September 28th, 2022. And docket number 1272, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979, relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of October 6, 2022.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, those dockets will be placed on file?
Yes.
Reports of committees, Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1019 and 1020.
Docket number 1019, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, to which was referred on August 31st, 2022. Docket number 1019, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $3,450,000 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 23 Safe and Successful Youth Initiative awarded by the Mass. Executive Office of Health and Human Services to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund a comprehensive interagency strategy that connect law enforcement, employment, education, public health, and youth development agencies to reduce youth violence in the Commonwealth. Submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass. And docket number 1020, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, to which was referred on August 31st, 2022. Docket number 1020, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $950,000 in the form of a grant for the securing the city's continuation awarded by the United States Department of Homeland Security to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund continued enhancement for regional capabilities to detect, identify, report, and interdict nuclear and other radioactive material out of regulatory control, and provide regional training and exercise opportunities necessary to enhance regional capabilities. Submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was an excellent and informative hearing on both dockets. Docket 1019, SSYI focuses on young adults ages 17 and 24 who are identified as proven risk or most likely to be perpetrators or victims of violent crime. SSYI receives referrals from partnering agencies to identify individuals who satisfy the eligibility criteria. In order to meet the eligibility criteria, an individual must be between the ages of 17 and 24 and meet one of the following conditions: repeatedly engages in crimes against persons, repeatedly engages in weapons violence, is in a leadership role in a gang, is substantially involved in gang activity or violence, significantly facilitates gang activity or street violence. An individual must also reside in the community, spend a significant amount of time in the community, or are expected to be released from custody into the community. BPD contracts with the Boston Public Health Commission. The program is the lead, they're the lead agency. The case managers at BPHC refer clients to partnering community organizations offering behavioral health, counseling, employment, and educational services. This program has proven to reduce violent crime in the neighborhoods. This program is essential to reducing crime, especially since similar programs have stopped in SSYI, is only, has been the only constant and successful program. As other programs continue to come along, it really speaks volumes to SSYI and the impact that they're having on behalf of our city. So with that, as chair, moving for, moving for passage of docket 1019. As it pertains to docket 1020, also extremely informative, Securing Cities, the STC is a five-year federally funded grant program with the objective of preventing the possession, movement, and deployment of nuclear and radiological weapon and component materials by an adversary of the United States. $950,000 will be allotted to purchase equipment, backfill, and overtime $950,000 will be allotted to purchase equipment, backfill and overtime for personnel equipment training, and also the STC Boston Program Manager. The equipment to be purchased includes backpack detection systems and mobile detective devices that allow for the detection of radioactive materials in public areas where there are large crowds, as well as a radiosotopy identification device that provides the ability to distinguish between non-threatening materials and high-level threats. And again, as Chair, moving for passage of docket 1020. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. And those hearings were very informative. Thank you. Council Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket... Mr. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? We'll go... we'll do 1019. Yeah. Mr. Clerk, that's on docket 1019.
Roll call vote on docket 1019. Councilor Royo.
Yes.
Councilor Royo, yes. Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Councilor Baker, yes. Councilor Bock.
Yes.
Councilor Bock, yes. Council Braden.
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Coletta.
Yes.
Council Coletta, yes. Council Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Council Fernandez Anderson, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Lara. Council Luizhen.
Yes.
Council Luizhen, yes. Council Mihia. Council Mihia, yes. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. And Council Rell.
Yes.
Council Rell. 12 votes in here.
The docket is passed. Council Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks acceptance of the committee report, passage of docket 1020. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Clerk, please take a roll call vote.
Roll call vote on docket 1020. Councilor Royo.
Yes.
Councilor Royo, yes. Council Baker.
Yes.
Council Baker, yes. Council Bock.
Yes.
Council Bock, yes. Council Braden.
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Coletta.
Yes.
Council Coletta, yes. Council Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Council Fernandez Anderson, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Lara. Council Luizhen.
Yes.
Council Luizhen, yes. Council Mihia. Council Mihia, yes. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. And Council Rell.
Yes.
Council Rell, yes. 12 votes in here.
1020 is passed. Matters recently heard for possible action, Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1210.
Docket number 1210, message in order for an appropriation order in the amount of $30,300,000 to cover the cost designing, constructing, equipping, and furnishing a new building for the Josiah Quincy Upper School.
The Chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson, the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means. Council Anderson... Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council Flynn, Council President. This Monday, I actually fell ill, and so I'd like to just take the time to thank Council Luizhen for holding down the fort. Docket 1210 is an order for appropriation amount of $30,300,000 for the purpose of paying costs associated with designing construction equipment, equipping, and furnishing a new six-story Josiah Upper Quincy building at 900 Washington Street. This appropriation is needed to finish the ongoing construction at the school and is eligible in part for reimbursement for the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The committee held a public hearing on this docket on Monday, and Council Luizhen chaired on my behalf Director of Public Facilities Department Carrie Griffin, Assistant Director of Operations Carlton Jones, Senior Project Manager for Josiah Quincy Project Ron McNulty, and Senior Project Manager for MSBA Schools Brian McLaughlin testified on behalf of the administration and discussed the project. The school is slated to open for 2024 school year. After conferring with Council Luizhen, I am recommending that this docket be read for the first time and assigned for further action.
Thank you, Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Luizhen, do you want to add anything? The Chair recognizes Council Luizhen. Council Luizhen.
Thank you. We had a very... we had a very informative meeting on... hearing on Monday about this docket. We talked about the increased labor cost that caused them to come back and request more money to complete this project, but there was a lot of good conversation about how we're also using this opportunity to address the climate resiliency issues, the pollution issues that are... face, especially for our residents in Chinatown. So it was a good conversation. We also talked about the underrepresented business enterprises and their efforts to make sure that women and BIPOC-owned businesses are able to participate. I think the target is 10%, and right now they're at almost 12%, 11.56%. And then we asked for disaggregated data so that we could figure out among those UBEs the percentage of which are women and the percent of which are BIPOC. They also said that they were on track. You know, they haven't been meeting right now at this moment their Boston residents' job policy goals, but they are putting every effort to making sure that those goals are being met, and they talk about it at every contractor meeting, and it's part of every subcontract... every contract that the contractor has with subcontractors. So it was a really great hearing for this $30 million request. I mean, I respect the Chair's decision here. I would recommend that it ought to pass, but I defer to the Chair on the action that she wants to take. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Council President Flynn, I... my apologies. I take your recommendation, and I am suggesting that the docket ought to pass.
Thank you, Council Fernandez Anderson. Right. Right. Council Fernandez Anderson seeks acceptance of the committee report in a first reading of docket 1210. Mr. Clerk, can you please take the roll?
First reading on docket 1210. Councilor Royo.
Yes.
Councilor Royo, yes. Council Baker.
Aye.
Council Baker, aye. Council Bock.
Aye.
Council Bock, aye. Council Braden.
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Coletta.
Yes.
Council Coletta, yes. Council Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Council Fernandez Anderson, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Lara. Council Luizhen.
Yes.
Council Luizhen, yes. Council Mihia. Council Mihia, yes. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. And Council Rell. Docket number 1210 has received its first reading, and 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The docket has received its first reading, and it will be assigned for further action. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1098.
Docket number 1098, order for a hearing regarding redistricting principles.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. The Committee on Redistricting was referred docket 1098, order for the adoption of redistricting principles offered by the Chair and referred to the committee seven weeks ago on August 31st, 2022. The docket is a proposed order for the City of... Boston City Council to adopt a series of principles to guide and inform procedures led by the Committee on Redistricting for crafting legally defensible city council electoral districts for the city of Boston. These principles involve the following: decorum and conduct during debate and deliberation, ensuring public participation to expand civic participation and public confidence in the redistricting process, including transparency through live-streamed and recorded sessions, legal review of proposed plans by outside counsel to ensure compliance under the Voting Rights Act, and considering proposals submitted by reviewing comparative demographic data for the baseline districts. Over the past four and a half weeks, the committee held a virtual working session on September 16th, a working session in the Piemonte Room on September 20th, a virtual working session on September 23rd, working sessions in the Piemonte Room on September 26th and 27th, a public hearing on September 29th, working sessions on September 30th and October 7th, a meeting to receive public testimony on October 11th, and a working session on Monday, October 17th. Last Tuesday, October 11th, the committee received at the request of the Chair communication from Corporation Council transmitting a memorandum conveying basic principles of redistricting criteria by the city council, prepared by Professor Jeffrey Weiss of the New York Law School, a recognized expert in redistricting. The memo outlined five required criteria: population equality, minority voting rights, compactness, con... continu... never get my... congru... contiguity. Excuse me, I'm having... I'm tongue-tied. And preservation of the neighborhoods. Three additional non-required criteria were discussed: communities of interest, a ban on partisanship, and maintaining existing district boundaries. In drafting and preparing deliberation for the adoption of this order, the committee reviewed and considered the precedent of past redistricting principles adopted or applied by the Boston City Council. These included the interim report of Chairwoman Rose Marie Sansone in 1981, the report by Chair Terry McDermott in 1982, an order passed by the council in 1991, a resolution offered by Councilor Chuck Turner in 2001, and incorporated into the report by Chair Maureen Feeney in 2002, and two messages of disapproval from Mayor Tom Menino in 2012. I would like to take this opportunity to outline the upcoming committee events. There will be a committee meeting to receive public testimony tomorrow evening, Thursday, October 20th, at 5:00 p.m. Please note that the location has been moved down the street to the cafeteria of the Community Academy of Science and Health at 11 Charles Street in Fields Corner, across from the Redline Tea Station. Members of the public in attendance will have two minutes to offer remarks. The recording of the public meeting will be posted online and rebroadcast. The committee will hold a working session on Friday, October 21st, at 10:00 a.m., Monday, October 24th, at 10:00 a.m., and Tuesday, October 25th, at 10:00 a.m. in City Hall. The committee is working to ensure each working session can be livestreamed. There will also be public hearings in the chamber the afternoon of Monday, October 24th, and all public notices will be published and supposed shortly. The committee requested further legal opinions and information from the Law Department and redistricting experts, and will share information with all counselors. The Chair intends to recommend potential action on a redistricting proposal in one week on Wednesday, October 26th. As Chair of the Committee on Redistricting, I recommend the docket 1098 for the adoption of redistricting principles ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. Council Braden seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1098. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Mr. Clerk, can you take a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 1098. Councilor Royo.
Yes.
Councilor Royo, yes. Councilor Baker.
Nay.
Councilor Baker, nay. Councilor Bock.
Aye.
Councilor Bock, aye. Council Braden.
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Coletta.
Yes.
Council Coletta, yes. Council Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Council Fernandez Anderson, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Lara. Council Luizhen.
Yes.
Council Luizhen, yes. Council Mihia. Council Mihia. C. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. And Council Rell. Docket number 1098 has received a majority.
The docket is passed. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1099 and 1100.
Docket number 1099, message in order for your approval in order to declare surplus the parcel of land currently owned by the city of Boston, located at Harrison Avenue in the Roxbury District, Ward 8, Parcel 0242604, and to transfer the parcel to the Public Facilities Commission for the care, custody, management, and control of said parcel. And docket number 1100, message in order for your approval in order to declare surplus two parcels of land currently owned by the city of Boston, located on... at Washington Street in the Roxbury District, Ward 8, Parcel 02426020, and Ward 8, Parcel 0246010, respectfully, and to transfer the parcels to the Public Facilities Commission for the care, custody, management, and control of said parcels.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Baker, the Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, so I'll speak on both of them, and then you'll separate the votes? Is that okay?
Yes. Yeah, we'll do a roll call vote.
Okay, on both of them.
On both.
I'm going to speak on both here.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Yesterday, we had a meeting in the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. I thank my Council President for showing up yesterday. This was basically a surplus property... surplus property committee hearing. We need to take the vote to surplus it so the city can enter into a point where they can dispose of it and plan it for affordable housing. As I said, Council President Flynn was here, James Smith, the Senior Environmental Compliance Manager in the Mayor's Office of Housing, and Donald Wright, the Director... Deputy Director of Real Estate Management and Sales for the Mayor's Office of Housing were there. Docket 1099 is a city-owned parcel comprised of approximately 9,068 square feet of vacant land as detailed below for surplus. The address is an unnumbered Harrison Avenue, Roxbury, address, Ward 8, Parcel 02426040, 9,068 square feet in Council District Number 7. Development of this parcel land will be in accordance with comprehensive planning processes associated with Plan Nubian Square and Roxbury Strategic Master Plan. A competitive RFP process followed, led by the Boston Planning and Development Agency, which included the subject parcel and the adjacent 3,800... no, 38,265 square foot parcel owned by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, also known as Parcel 8. The proposed project, known as NUBA Residence, is a mixed-use, mixed-income residential and commercial development, including the construction of approximately 114 units with both affordable rental and homeownership units. The commercial development includes 3,000 square feet of gallery/cafe, 10 live-work units, and 10 ground-floor parking spaces. The development also includes a public park to be tentatively called Roxbury Gateway Park. Now, docket number 1100 is two city-owned parcels comprised of approximately 10,841 square feet of land with buildings as detailed below for the surplus. Address for parcel number 1 is an unnumbered Washington Street, Roxbury, Ward 8, Parcel 02426010, 3,781 square feet in Council District 7. Address for parcel number 2 under docket 1100 is an unnumbered Washington Street, Roxbury, Ward 8, Parcel 02426020, 7,060 square foot lot in District 7, Roxbury. Planted... The development of these contiguous pieces of land will be in accordance with the comprehensive planning process associated with the plan, Nubian Square and Roxbury Strategic Master Plan, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, followed by a competitive RFP. The proposed projects will renovate and repurpose the historic NAWN factory building utilizing the existing footprint height enassing. Excuse me. The new proposed use is a rehearsal studio space providing space for the community to perform and teach, enriching the cultural resources for the arts in Roxbury. The proposed project will include seven studios, a 1,200-square-foot cultural space on the ground floor, will run the length of the building's interior, providing a gallery space for the displays depicting the cultural heritage of the Nubian neighborhood, exterior plans including an outdoor plaza and a fitness park. Based on the documents and the hearing we had yesterday, the information presented at the hearing and having considered the same, I respectfully recommend that a roll call vote be taken, and these matters pass. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Baker. Councilor Baker seeks acceptance of the committee Councillor Baker seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of Doc 1099. Mr. Clerk, we're going to do a roll call vote on 1099, please.
Doc number 1099, roll call vote. Councillor Arroyo?
Yes.
Councillor Arroyo, yes. Councillor Baker?
Aye.
Councillor Baker, aye. Councillor Bock?
Aye.
Councillor Bock, aye. Councillor Braden?
Yes.
Councillor Braden, yes. Councillor Coletta?
Yes.
Councillor Coletta, yes. Councillor Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Councillor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Councillor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councillor Flaherty, yes. Councillor Flynn?
Yes.
Councillor Flynn, yes. Councillor Lara? Councillor Luizhen?
Yes.
Councillor Luizhen, yes. Councillor Mejia?
Yes.
Councillor Mejia, yes. Councillor Murphy?
Yes.
Councillor Murphy, yes. And Councillor Worrell?
Yes.
Councillor Worrell? Doc number 1099 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Clerk, would you take the roll call vote on 1100?
Roll call vote on Doc 1100, Councillor Arroyo?
Yes.
Councillor Arroyo, yes. Councillor Baker?
Aye.
Councillor Baker, aye. Councillor Bock?
Aye.
Councillor Bock, aye. Councillor Braden?
Yes.
Councillor Braden, yes. Councillor Coletta?
Yes.
Councillor Coletta, yes. Councillor Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Councillor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Councillor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councillor Flaherty, yes. Councillor Flynn?
Yes.
Councillor Flynn, yes. Councillor Lara? Councillor Luizhen?
Yes.
Councillor Luizhen, yes. Councillor Mejia? Councillor Mejia, yes. Councillor Murphy?
Yes.
Councillor Murphy, yes. And Councillor Worrell?
Yes.
Councillor Worrell, yes. Doc number 1100 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Clerk, Doc 0888 will remain in committee as the hearing was postponed. We're on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, we're going to take two Docets out of order at this time at the request of the Chair and at the request of my colleague, Councillor Bock. One of them is students from Boston University that are here, and the other is workers from Local 26 that are also here. So we didn't want to try to, we wanted to try to get them out as soon as we can. So if we could take 1277 first, Mr. Clerk?
Doc number 1277, Councillor Flynn offered the following. Resolution in support of Unite Here Local 26 Hyatt Centric Hotel Workers to get a first contract.
The Chair recognizes Councillor Flynn. Councillor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you.
Oops.
Thank you, Councillor Braden.
May I add Councillor Luizhen and Councillor Coletta as an original cosponsors, please?
Councillor Flynn, yes, those two may be added. Councillor?
Thank you, Councillor Braden. This is a resolution supporting our Unite Here Local 26 Hyatt Centric Hotel Workers as they negotiate their first contract. Many of them are in the audience today. The hotel workers at this hotel owned by Hyatt Centric at Faneuil Hall area joined Unite Here Local 26 in March 2021. And many of its workers earn $4 less per hour than union hotels, union workers at other hotels. Most of the Hyatt Centric workers are not on the employer-sponsored health insurance. The Hyatt Centric Hotel workers are asking for similar wages, benefits, working conditions, as other union workers who do similar work at other hotels. Yet with over a year of bargaining, this hotel group, Magna Hospitality, and the workers represented by the professional team at Unite Local 26, they haven't reached an agreement. And the Hyatt Centric workers have begun conducting picket lines in front of the hotel. I know many of our colleagues that are around this table have been there, not just on Labor Day, but other days as well. So this resolution is to support these workers and to ask Magna Hospitality to negotiate in good faith with our workers. Imagine working and receiving $4 less than your brothers and sisters. We call this a compassionate city, the most progressive and liberal city in the country. Limited healthcare benefits that they have as well. They work hard. The first people that come to Boston, visitors that come to Boston, is the hotel workers greet them. They treat them with respect. They welcome them to our city. And this hotel is not able to pay them a fee of wage, give them good health insurance, dignity, and retirement. This hotel is in my district. It has union workers, but I'm embarrassed when my constituents and workers in my district don't receive equal wages. That's an embarrassment to the city of Boston. It's an embarrassment to the City Council here as well. So I'm proud to stand here with all of my colleagues, Councillor Luizhen, Councillor Coletta as well. I know Councillor Coletta has family that work at Local 26. So just want to say thank you to all of my colleagues for always being there for not just the hotel and restaurant workers, but for workers throughout the city whenever they're seeking economic justice. I hope that we can suspend and adopt this resolution today. Thank you, Councillor Braden.
Thank you, Councillor Flynn. The Chair recognizes Councillor Luizhen. Councillor Luizhen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councillor Braden, and thank you to President Flynn for adding me to this order. Thank you to all the Unite Here Local 26 members for being here and for your solidarity all the time with workers. I'm not going to, I think President Flynn laid it out pretty well that you make $4 less than union workers is an abomination in this very expensive city where folks are suffering from food insecurity and housing insecurity. And we depend on you as essential workers, as the folks who are doing the work that is so central and so important to making sure that we're able to function as a city, to make sure that we're able to be the world-class city where people can come and visit and enjoy and be tourists and have business meetings. That doesn't happen without all of you. And so we are here to support in solidarity. As President Flynn said, we were there on Labor Day. We've been there on other days and will continue to be there with you. We know the victories that Unite Here Local 26 can win. We saw the recent victory at Northeastern in the dining hall where many of my family members, including my father, worked. And so we know that when we stand together and fight together, we win in solidarity. And everything that we do is to build the work of power in the city to make sure that we are standing in the gap of corporate overreach. So I just want to make sure that Magna Hospitality is listening and that they're able to come to the table and bargain and negotiate in good faith with all of you. And until then, you have our commitment to be there with you on the picket line. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Luizhen. Councillor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councillor Braden. And I just want to thank the lead sponsor, Councillor Flynn, for pushing this forward and adding me as a cosponsor. It is always a pleasure hearing you talk about matters related to unions and hearing just how strong your advocacy is and seeing you be a champion. So I just want to call that out. I am proud to support Unite Here Local 26 and support the Hyatt Centric workers to get their first contract. I just found out that you are located literally across the street. You are our neighbors, so welcome to all of you. My family members are proud Local 26 members. And beyond that, I have gotten a chance to know and love members who work and reside in my district over the last couple of years. As we know, a resolution is a way to affirm our collective opinions and values. And so I will always stand in solidarity with the hotel industry and restaurant workers for a fair contract that provides a living wage because we all know that one job should be enough. And you deserve adequate health care and benefits and safe working conditions. And every day that passes by without a contract is a devaluation of your time, your hard work and your energy. And as Councillor Flynn mentioned, an embarrassment to the city of Boston. So just know that I stand with you all in this endeavor and call for the Hyatt Corporation, which makes billions of, millions if not billions of dollars, to give their employees the dignity that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Coletta. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Oh, beg your pardon. Councillor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you so much.
Hang on, better get your mic on.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councillor Braden. We are stronger as a city when our workers are well-paid and treated with dignity that they deserve. Gracias por estar aquí. Obrigada por nos quitar el frio. In this age of rampant education and runway housing costs, we cannot forget or can forget that the history of Boston and the history of its working class, both immigrant and native-born. We are at our core, blue-collar city. And despite the outrageous cost of living that has befallen us, many of our people remain so. And this is where a strong labor movement comes in. This is where, when you have a strong union, you can attain better wages. When you have a strong union, you can attain better working conditions. When you have a strong union, you can attain better benefits. I stand here in support of you, but I also wanted to add that there's a psychological wage involved as well. And you begin to hold your head up high and begin to speak up for yourself and your fellow workers. And I stand here with you and I continue to support. Thank you so much. I hope that, I'd like to go on record of support, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Fernandez Anderson. Councillor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, for bringing this forward. We all know that union jobs are central to strong middle class, providing good wages, benefits, and stability. What we talked about less often is that they are good for businesses, working to increase employee satisfaction, health, productivity, and longevity. Perhaps even more importantly, they are good for communities, helping to keep money in local economies rather than sending it back to headquarters and bank accounts of multinational corporations. Before the pandemic, hotel workers were already among the hardest workers with the lowest pay. Early in the pandemic, they worked tirelessly to ensure doctors, nurses, and other support personnel had clean and comfortable rooms to stay in. With tourism rebounding, it is time for the people who keep our hotels open and operating and sharing the proceeds. I'm proud to stand here with the Hyatt Centric employees and urge Magna Hospitality to negotiate in good faith with Unite Here Local 26 to ensure their workers are paid fairly. Thank you, and I stand in support.
Thank you, Councillor Worrell. Councillor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the sponsors for bringing this resolution to the council. And no más quiero decirles muchas gracias a todos ustedes que están aquí hoy peleando para lo derecho de los trabajadores, okay? And I'm saying that in Spanish specifically for my mom, who I always talk about. Maybe 10 or 12 years ago, we tried to get her dining hall to be unionized. And to this day, she's 73 years old, and she is still too poor to retire. And so when we talk about justice and when we talk about this work, we have to recognize that we need to send a strong statement out to corporate greed and let them know that they can continue to do business here in the city of Boston and devalue and disregard and disrespect our workforce. So I stand here in solidarity with you today and always. Please sign my name. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Mejia. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Councillor Arroyo? Councillor Baker? Councillor Bock? Councillor Fernandez Anderson? Councillor Flaherty? Councillor Mejia? Councillor Murphy? Councillor Worrell? And please add my name. Councillor Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of this resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The Doc has been adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Braden. Mr. Clerk, can we take Doc 1282 next, please?
Doc number 1282, Councillor Bock offered the following. Resolution in support of the Boston University Graduate Workers Union.
The Chair recognizes Councillor Bock. Councillor Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. And I'd ask to add Councillor Braden as an original cosponsor and suspend Rule 12 to add Councillor Luizhen.
Hearing no objection, both are added. The Chair recognizes Councillor Bock.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you for letting us take this out of order. I'm glad to have the two back-to-back because I think it really shows how for us to have a strong workers' movement in Boston, we need to have unions at every level and for every type of work. And I think, you know, it's so exciting to me that the grad workers and BU are raising their voices to say that they want to be unionized. And specifically, they want to unionize with SEIU 509 when, you know, SEIU in various forms organizes a large number of other workers at Boston University, including the janitors. And then we've got our university dining hall organizations with Local 26. So I just, I think it just reminds us that so often in this country, the goal of capital is to divide workers and make workers feel like certain categories of people are not supposed to be represented. And that's a way that we keep people from having the dignity and compensation that they deserve in work. I, myself, am a former graduate worker. I know that it's real work. I know also that in many ways, our graduate students can be very vulnerable in their workplaces. Often, they're working for people who also control the future of their sort of lives professionally. And they can often be like in a workplace where they're just a worker alone or with only a couple of people. So it can be a very vulnerable situation, especially our international students whose visas are connected to. Their studentship can be hard to speak up about workplace violations. And fundamentally, we still have far too many graduate students who, even as they're working, really doing the work that makes our universities work, they're still facing housing insecurity, food insecurity, concerns about sexual harassment, in the case of Boston University, really inferior dental care. There's just, there's a host of issues. And to me, it's incredibly important that we stand up and say to our big universities, and in this case, it's Boston University, hey, you know, you're one of the biggest employers in the city. You're a nonprofit, as we frequently discuss. And, you know, if that's the case and the focus is to be like thinking about a pro-social mission, then one of the most fundamental things that you need to do is treat your workers with respect. And the grad workers' union, they have already done an amazing job collecting a huge number of cards that are well over the majority of their unit, having already signed cards saying they want to organize. And so the time has come for Boston University to recognize them voluntarily. And there's just, there's no reason why the university should be fighting tooth and nail every step of the way here when the majority of the workers in this unit have already raised their hand and said, hey, we want to bargain collectively. We want to talk about what we need to do this work well and with dignity. And we want you to sit down and bargain with us for a fair contract. So the resolution today is not just to support the grad workers, but specifically to call on Boston University to voluntarily recognize their unit so that they can begin that work negotiating a fair contract. And I'm really proud to be joined by Councillors Braden and Luizhen. And I very much hope that all the councillors here in the chamber today will join me in sending that message to the university, which, as I said, it's a great university. I am proud to represent the majority of its campus in District 8. But BU works because they do. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Bock. The Chair recognizes Councillor Braden. Councillor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councillor President Flynn, and thank you to Councillor Bock for including me as a cosponsor. District 9, Alston Brighton, is home to many graduate students from the universities in our district, and particularly Boston University. They are my constituents and Councillor Bock's constituents, and many of other of us have constituents who are graduate workers. I fully support their efforts to organize and join the SEIU Local 509. These graduate student workers are essential to the success of our universities. They live and work in one of the most expensive cities in the country, and their wages are insufficient to meet their cost of living. I want to emphasize that graduate students are doing real work. This is something that comes up in conversations, that it's, they're not, they're students, they're not doing real work. But absolutely, they're doing real work. They deserve the benefits of being members of a union and to have their union recognized by Boston University. And I urge that not only would their union be recognized, And I urge that not only would their union be recognized, but that Boston University would negotiate with their local unit in good faith, so that we can ensure that students, graduate students, who contribute so much to our, students contribute so much to the universities in our city, that they will be able to have their needs recognized and recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. The chair recognizes Council Luizhen. Council Luizhen, you have the floor.
President Flynn, and I thank the sponsors, I thank Council Bach for adding me to this matter. I want to thank the grad students from BU for all of your organizing work, because we're following your lead. We know that yesterday you all delivered 1,800 cards to the NLRB. There's no reason why BU is not recognizing you. Of course, your work is real work. So many of us, when we were in college, depended on our grad school workers, and the professors weren't really doing, all they did is come in for an hour or two lecture, and then you all do the real work. There's no reason why you should be suffering from housing or food insecurity, whether you are a grad school worker or a worker at a hotel. And so I thank you for really leading the charge here, and as more university grad students really begin to put their foot down and recognize that your labor should be valued. My staffer, Hodin, a fellow Terrier, was there with you, demanding that BU recognize you as a union, and so we'll continue to stand with you, by the way, all the way. During the pandemic, BU's endowment grew by $971 billion, right? That's almost a billion dollars, and their total endowment is up to $3.4 billion. There's no reason why they can't recognize you. There's no reason why they can't pay you justly and so that you're not suffering from food insecurity. We need to stand in the gap here as well, even if they consider themselves to be nonprofit institutions, right? These endowments are proof positive that they can do more and that they should do more, and that we will all demand collectively that they do more. So salute to you. We'll be with you every step of the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Luizhen. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'm just so super inspired, because we just keep getting younger and younger in terms of organizing, right? And sending out a strong message. So I just wanted to rise in support and to thank you for your leadership in this space, and more importantly, for setting the stage for what it looks like to value workers. I hope that when my daughter reaches that age, or even before then, that she recognizes that the work that you have done have created a space for her to be able to be fully honored and valued. So thank you for your leadership, and please sign my name.
Thank you, Council Mejia. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clark, please add Council Arroyo. Baker, Council Baker. Council Coletta, Council Fernandez-Anderson, Council Flaherty. Council Mejia, please add the chair. Council Bach, Council Luizhen, Council Braden, seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1282. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has been adopted. At this time, I would like to ask if my colleagues could join us up for a photo, and if Local 26, could you join us for a photo? And then I'll have the students from Boston University, graduate students from Boston University after. Yeah, the Boston University graduate students.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Yeah, the Boston University graduate students.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Oh.
Yeah.
Come on, come on, come on.
Thanks for being here.
Saffire.
Saffire.
One more, one more.
Everybody ready?
I'm asked.
Come on.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, guys.
You could take a break, yeah.
Mr. Clark, please read docket 1273.
Document number 1273, Council Baker offered the following: In ordinance amending city council electoral districts.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Baker. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me first just say, God grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference. Every 10 years, we were obligated to go through this strenuous redistricting process, and I'm no stranger to doing so. I was the only one here last time on the body 10 years ago when we went through this. I'm committed to the guidelines set forth by the Voting Rights Act. The map I propose keeps our current city council districts compact, contiguous, preserves our neighborhoods, and keeps our communities of interest intact, including parish boundaries, which could be villages, which are neighborhoods, and the neighborhoods are a factor. This proposed map continues to strengthen District 3's already existing opportunity district status. I would argue that it's also an existing legacy district, which people were talking about, legacy districts, first time I heard it. It keeps 81 and 91 together in District 2, which we heard loud and clear from the Chinese progressives. And that connection happens through the South End with District 2. This also is something that Mass voters' table have repeatedly mentioned. District 3 becomes 30% white, making it 63% non-white. A coalition map. Mr. President, every district that we have, you need to form a coalition to win. District 3 is a coalition, which I formed 10 years ago with Vietnamese help, with Cape Verdean help, with Spanish help, with Black help. You have to listen to everyone in your district. You know that, Mr. President, all corners of your district. Under the map I filed, I'm uniting Fields Corner and Little Saigon District and Brigham Ward 16 entirely under District 3. We want to stay together. In addition, Bay Villages moved into District 8, shifting from District 2, more of a downtown neighborhood, with my good colleague over here. There's minimal impact from the baseline map, roughly a dozen precincts moves. District 3 does not go into South Boston and chop up housing developments, although it does have 77, which is Mariel and McCormick, which I got 10 years ago, which remains whole, which also has commonality in the transportation and the resilience of that neighborhood. The map I'm proposing is similar to the map that was proposed by the committee chairs, and I look forward to an actual working session, where we're not talking about principles, we're talking about precincts. We haven't gotten to the point where we traded around precincts at all. We're running out of time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Baker. Would anyone else, would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clark, please add. Council Braden, please add. Council Flaherty, please add. Council Murphy, please add. The chair. Docket 1273 will be referred to the Committee on Redistricting. Mr. Clark, docket 1274 has been withdrawn since the sponsor was absent today. Mr. Clark, can you please read docket 1275?
Document number 1275, Councilors Braden and Arroyo offered the following: In ordinance amending city council electoral districts.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The wonderful thing about our participatory democracy is that we have the opportunity to engage residents and community members in the legislative process if we so choose. Massachusetts is one of a handful of states throughout the country that ensures the right to free petition, and the interpretation in our state is unique compared to all others. This principle can be tracked back to the 12th liberty in the Massachusetts Body of Liberties from 1641, and it can be found in the state constitution of 1780 in Article 19. According to the state library, Massachusetts is the only state in the country that gives its citizens the right to file bills directly in its state legislature. The spirit of this principle in our state constitution could be applied to how we conduct our work here at the local level. As Chair of the Committee on Redistricting, that is the intent of this redistricting proposal I am introducing alongside my colleague, Council Arroyo. I also want to state that it is not unusual or unprecedented for there to be numerous maps filed by councilors nor the committee chair, and I welcome the addition of Council Baker's map this afternoon. In 2012, there were about a dozen maps filed, at least three of which were filed by Chair Lenihan, and in 2002, there were at least 10 maps filed, including three filed simultaneously as Plans A, B, and C by Chair Feeny. As councilors are aware, a coalition of civil rights leaders and neighborhood advocates and community organizations crafted what they referred to as a unity map and presented it to councilors. For the first time in our city's 40-year history, a district-based local representation, a proposal crafted by and for the community, has been brought properly before the council as a filed docket. I have made the decision to do so as Chair of the Committee on Redistricting, and I want to be clear that any councillor has the opportunity to do the same at their discretion by the request of any resident of our neighborhood civic association. While the proposal was brought forth through the leadership of the NAACP Boston branch, I want to be clear that it is representative of a larger coalition of leaders who have historically been intimately involved in civil rights and voting rights advocacy locally, regionally, and nationally, including the Urban League of Eastern Massachusetts, the Chinese Progressive Association, the New England United for Justice, the New Democracy Coalition, Mass Vote, and more community-based organizations. It is also important to note that in redistricting lawsuits, the courts have asked plaintiffs to present their own alternative maps to demonstrate whether it is possible to draw more equitable districts, providing greater opportunity for protected classes, to elect their candidates of choice under the Voting Rights Act. In fact, the court case against the city 40 years ago involved a community-drawn alternative map that was compared against the plan base passed by the council. Bringing this proposal formally before the body is to identify missed opportunities and misplaced priorities of past decades in order to take bold corrective action. The very civil rights organizations coming to us with concerns are the very organizations that could potentially initiate complaints under the Voting Rights Act. So it is actually essential that they are intimately and directly involved in informing our deliberations, so that we, as a body, can take all necessary information to pass a legally defensible map. I am confident that formally bringing this proposal before the body will make a profound step towards ensuring that we pass a map that will allow each and every resident in the city of Boston to have a fair chance to elect their candidates of choice, no matter what neighborhood or district they live in. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Braden. The chair recognizes Council Arroyo. Council Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank Councilor Braden for her grace during this period. Redistricting can get folks worked up, and so it's great to see somebody who's even keeled sort of leading the way. In terms of the map that was presented by Council Braden and myself, I think it goes a long way towards being a true compromise of the map previously presented by myself and Council Fernandez-Anderson, and previously represented by Council Braden and Council Worrell. There are many similarities in that map, there are some differences and changes, but if you look at the videos and the recordings of our working sessions, of our listening, community listening sessions, you will see that the map presented today, largely in partnership and complete partnership with the NAACP, the Chinese Progressive Association, the Urban League of Eastern Massachusetts, the New England United for Justice, the Mass Voter Table, the Joint Democracy Coalition, and other neighborhood and community groups. It also takes into account what we heard from community here at this podium over the last couple of weeks. It does much to unite Southern Dorchester, it does much to unite the Chinese and Asian community in the South End with Chinatown, ensure that they have their voice collectively heard, something we heard repeatedly was important to both community and councilors. It does much to keep and strengthen our opportunity districts, as our mandate is by the principles of the Voting Rights Act, which I believe this map is grounded in and firmly led by. And I look forward to the next week having conversations and building upon what I think is a very solid foundation. And it's a solid foundation because it was not just done here in this room, but it was done in partnership with organizations and community, and by reincorporating feedback both from councilors in this room and from community members throughout the city of Boston. And so I think that's where the best things come. I look forward to this unity map being presented to this committee and being heard. I think the coalitions that are already in support of this map and the communities that have already voiced their support for this map is incredibly important, and almost just so that we just put it there and leave it there, so we can have further conversation about it. I think the objectives of sort of communities of interest in trying to unify and hit as many of those pieces as we can, I think this map does a tremendous job doing that, considering the tremendous difficulty and the reality that not every community of interest, not every group is going to be happy with any map that we put forward ultimately and pass. And so I think, considering the restraints and sort of the constraints of not being able to make every single person happy, I think this map does quite a bit of good. And so, thank you, Council Braden, thank you to the organizations that have been leading on this, have not just led on this in this iteration, but have been present and constant over the last couple of decades of making sure that we do a good job of representing what Boston should be now, but also moving forward. Thank you, Council Flynn.
Thank you, Council Arroyo. Would anyone like to add their name? Please, please raise your hand. Mr. Clark, please add Council Fernandez-Anderson, please add Council Luizhen, please, that's it, please add Council Mejia. Docket 127-
Mr. President, I'd like to speak on that.
I'm not, I'm not allowing speaking at this time.
Fair enough.
Docket 1275 will be referred to the Committee on Redistricting. Mr. Clark, please read docket 1276, please.
Document number 1276, Council Luizhen offered the following: Order for a hearing on discrimination in lending and appraisals.
The chair recognizes Council Luizhen. Council Luizhen, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, President Flynn. This is something my office has been working on, and we've been debating about when we would hold this hearing, but it is critically important that we talk about these issues now, especially yesterday, along with Chi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated talking about the issues that Black and Brown homeowners face, Black and Brown want-to-be homeowners face in our city and the problems that they face. So just to read into the record, oh, my bad. Council President, could I please add Council Tanya Fernandez-Anderson as an original cosponsor?
Council Fernandez-Anderson is added. The chair recognizes Council Luizhen.
Thank you, apologies. Okay. So some of these numbers are really alarming, and it's really important that they be read into the record, so folks know what we're dealing with here. According to the 2020 census figures, Boston is experiencing a net departure of Black residents, where approximately 8,800 fewer Black people are calling Boston home in the last 10 years. Specifically, Dorchester saw a 13% decline in Black residents, Mattapan a 5% decline, and Roxbury a 12% decline in Black residents over the last decade, according to Boston Planning Development Agency data. And so we know that we have a problem both in the rental market, with folks facing displacement, but we also have the desire that so many people have to become homeowners, that is as American as apple pie, that so many families aren't able to experience here. And so we have Black and Brown folks leaving because the rent is too high, and we have Black and Brown folks leaving because they are being denied access to homeownership. Docket 1275 will be referred to the Committee on Redistricting. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1276, please.
Docket number 1276. Counselor Loujain offered the following. Order for a hearing on discrimination in lending and appraisals.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Loujain. Counselor Loujain, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, President Flynn. This is something my office has been working on, and we've been debating about when we would hold this hearing, but it is critically important that we talk about these issues now, especially yesterday, along with Chi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated talking about the issues that Black and Brown homeowners face, Black and Brown want-to-be homeowners face in our city and the problems that they face. So just to read into the record, oh, my bad. Counsel President, could I please add Counselor Tanya Fernandez Anderson as an original co-sponsor?
Counselor Fernandez Anderson is added. The Chair recognizes Counsel Loujain.
Thank you, apologies. Okay. So some of these numbers are really alarming, and it's really important that they be read into the record so folks know what we're dealing with here. According to the 2020 census figures, Boston is experiencing a net departure of Black residents, where approximately 8,800 fewer Black people are calling Boston home in the last 10 years. Specifically, Dorchester saw a 13% decline in Black residents, Mattapan a 5% decline, and Roxbury a 12% decline in Black residents over the last decade, according to Boston Planning Development Agency data. And so we know that we have a problem both in the rental market with folks facing displacement, but we also have the desire that so many people have to become homeowners that is as American as apple pie, that so many families aren't able to experience here. And so we have Black and Brown folks leaving because the rent is too high, and we have Black and Brown folks leaving because they are being denied access to homeownership. The 2021 Partnership for Financial Equity report found that Black households were far more likely than white households to be rejected for a loan, even when accounting for control measures such as levels of income. The report also found that large institutional banks are failing us because they are not lending when we hold everything else constant. So not only are we facing discrimination in lending, also face discrimination in appraisals. A 2021 analysis by Freddie Mac found that 12.5% of homes appraised in Black communities were valued at less than the original cost of constructing the home. That figure compares to 7.4% of homes in white neighborhoods and 9.4% of homes in Latino areas. And other studies show, on average, $48,000 per less, the homes in Black communities are valued at $48,000 less, $48,000 less than the appraised value of the home if it was considered owned by a white person. So we have a lot of work to do in the city to make sure that we are seeing justice not only in the lending process, but also in appraisals. And oftentimes, it's really hard because we say, what can we do as a city? Well, we have banks that partner with us in our One Mortgage Program, our One Plus Boston Program, but we've also been seeing banks leave that program. Santander, a really big lender for the city of Boston in those programs, has left the mortgage market. So we need to hold these mortgage companies to task when we look at our neighborhoods like Roxbury, Mattapan, Dorchester, neighborhoods that suffered from blockbusting and redlining in the 1960s and 1970s. We have to think about the corrective action that we have to take and in partnership with the banks to hold them to task. Birth out of redlining was the Community Reinvestment Act, where banks have obligations to serve communities in low-income neighborhoods that are predominantly Black and Brown, and a lot of banks are not living up to, are not living up to those requirements. And when I talk about banks, we have our large institutional banks, we have community banks, and there are other really great ideas floating out there, such as public banks, about how to help us solve this problem. But we need banks to really lean in. And so there's great work happening, and so I look forward to holding this hearing alongside my councillor colleague, Tanya Fernandez Anderson, who has been an unequivocal voice in supporting the need for homeownership in Black neighborhoods, especially in D7. And I look forward to partnering with all the organizations that are doing work in this space, Partnership for Financial Equity, formerly the Community Banking Council, and all the different organizations led by Black and Brown folks that have been advocating for more investments in our communities through more loans that are not loans that we saw during the subprime mortgage crisis. We're not talking about those sorts of loans. We're talking about affordable and sustainable loans that are available in our communities that are corrective for the discrimination that these communities face. I look forward to working with our Fair Housing Office on this issue and to all of our community partners so that we can make homeownership more of a reality and so we don't see so much flight from our communities for people who want to make homeownership reality. I myself recently became a homeowner. In the process of doing so, there were junctures where I was like, would they be asking me these questions if I were a white applicant? And so we know that the issues are deep and many, and that a hearing order alone is not going to solve a problem that involves a federal, state, and local level, but it's going to be a start. And we know that there are a lot of folks already working on this issue, so I look forward to this hearing.
Thank you, Counsel Loujain. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel President Flynn, and thank you to Counsel Loujain for allowing me to partner with you on this hearing order. Throughout the history of our city and nation, there has been blatant discrimination in lending and appraisals demanding on the color of the persons attempting to get a loan or have their property appraised. Black and Brown borrowers were recently systemically stared into subprime loans, even when many of them qualify for standard loans. This ended up contributing to the economic crisis of 2007. In Boston neighborhoods were historically redlined, and it was determined that Black people could only buy in certain neighborhoods. Black and Latino homeowners, as my councillor colleague already alluded to, are twice as likely to get low appraisal rates as they are white counterparts. Homes in Black and Latino Hispanic neighborhoods are often valued lower price for two reasons. The market price is held down because of bias against neighborhoods, and values can be depressed still further through discrimination in lending markets and appraisals. Recently, a Black family had their home appraised for $450,000. Later, they had a friend of theirs, a white friend of theirs, take a look at their place so they could get upraised, and the home was then valued at $700,000. Such examples are so blatant and manifest that the satirical paper, The Union, recently had an article, Pokemon, at this where a young Black homeowner put up photos of white supremacists all over his house and then left during the appraisal. The value of the house, of course, skyrocketed. If only our reality was a bit more removed from satire. In any case, we have a lot of work to do regarding this matter, and therefore, again, I thank you so much for allowing me to partner with you on this with you and look forward to the conversation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Before I call Counsel Worrell and Counsel Mahia and others, I just wanted to, before I call on Counsel Worrell and Counsel Mahia, I just wanted to go back on the redistricting. Any of that discussion, I wasn't taking testimony here. That would happen in the hearing and in the working sessions, not during the Wednesday meeting. That's where the real work will get done, is in the meetings, not in the Wednesday meeting. So that is the reason I've been consistent on that. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Loujain, for elevating this issue. Discrimination and race issues in housing are nothing new, especially in Boston. Even when controlling for incomes and credit scores, Black, Brown, and LGBTQ Americans are significantly more likely to be denied loans. Those who are approved often pay higher interest rates than the majority counterparts. The result is exactly what one would expect, and is that we see today Black and Brown Bostonians leaving the city to fulfill their dreams of homeownership or paying more to get less. Increase in homeownership among Black Bostonians is critical. It is not only one of the best ways to enhance individual wealth, but is also a key step in working to stabilize families, communities throughout the city. As a council, we need to work with banks to ensure that they offer loan products that target these families, with developers to ensure that there is enough affordable housing stock, and with the administration to provide homeownership vouchers to get people into homes. The long-term fiscal help of our city depends on it. I look forward to working with the council to hold banks accountable and to ensure all Bostonians have a fair opportunity to own their homes.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Worrell. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. Counsel Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. All right, so you know, here in this council, it's really important for us to recognize what this moment is all about, right? And whenever we bring in race into any conversation, there's always, you know, clapback in regards to what we're bringing onto this floor and what we're fighting for. But I think it's really important, as we continue to have these conversations, had these conversations been presented and fought for 10 or so years ago, you know, we probably would have more residents of color still living here in the city of Boston, right? So as we continue to move forward through these processes, I just want to be super mindful that we need to be okay to talk about race, and we need to be able to be courageous around those conversations and not make it seem like it's us versus them, which is kind of the way it usually lands for a lot of folks. So I'm going to encourage my colleagues, as we continue to grapple with these issues, that we recognize that most of the folks who have left the city of Boston grew up here and could no longer afford to purchase their homes here, so now they're building leadership in Brockton and Randolph. So it's not just about losing residents, but we're also losing students and families. And so if we're really serious about getting a handle on this issue, then I think it's really important for us to lean into it and do so with the best intentions around making sure that our people are able to stay in the city in which they worked so hard for. So with that, I thank my colleagues for having those courageous conversations and bringing it onto the council floor, and for all of us to be able to roll up our sleeves and do the people's business work. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Bar. Counsel Bar, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I'll be brief. I just wanted to say, please sign my name. It's been my pleasure to be working over the last seven years with the Massachusetts Affordable Housing Alliance and Maha, and I just wanted to echo Counsel Loujain's point that, you know, basically every good mortgage program that we have in the city has actually come out of the recognition of this enduring discrimination. And that goes all the way back to the predecessors to the One Plus Mortgage Program that we have now. And I'm really glad to see the financial, the Partnership for Financial Equity, which is the rebranding of MICBIC, that's continuing to take these issues forward. And I think it's fantastic that Counsel Loujain and Counsel Fernandez Anderson are leading this push to see what we, the council, can do. But I just want to emphasize that there is no conversation about the public efforts to try to provide better first-time homebuyer and first-generation homebuyer programs in this city without combining it with discussion of the historical discrimination that there's been in this space.
Thank you, Counsel Bar. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to thank the co-sponsors. You know, housing all across the country has become commodified, and it is seen as an investment opportunity for outside investors who turn up in our neighborhoods with cash. They don't have to seek a mortgage, they don't have to get approval, and they buy up our housing stock, which is another factor in which makes it so unfair that our folks who live in our neighborhoods are beaten to the punch when it comes to being able to buy a home and establish some long-term housing stability in our great city. We need to urgently address this issue and ensure that our residents of color have every equal opportunity in terms of being able to buy a home and secure, invest, and grow their wealth and establish long-term residency in the city without fear of displacement due to increased rents, et cetera. So I wholeheartedly support this order and look forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Worrell. Please add the Chair. Docket 1276 will be referred to the Committee on Civil Rights and Immigration Advancement.
Yeah, Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1281.
That's out of order as well. Docket number 1281. Counsel Flynn offered the following. Resolution declaring gun violence as a public health emergency.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. May I add Counsel Murphy as an original co-sponsor?
Seeing no objection, Counsel Murphy is added as the co-sponsor.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. This resolution is calling gun violence and declaring it a public health emergency in the city of Boston. I previously did that on a speeding vehicle. I thought a speeding vehicle was a public health emergency. I also think gun violence is a public health emergency in our city. It's described as an epidemic. Many public health professionals see gun violence as a health crisis, public health crisis. I certainly do. The American Medical Association, American Public Health Association calling it this, along with the Center for Disease Control called gun violence a serious public health threat in 2021. I don't think they call it an emergency, though. Gun violence is a leading cause of death and injuries in this country, causing harm to not only the individual, but to communities experience gun violence in their neighborhoods. More than two decades after Congress banned the CDC from funding research into gun violence, the CDC is finally funding research into firearm violence prevention in 2021, which allows the public health researchers now to study ways to reduce firearm deaths and injuries. At a recent Boston City Council Public Safety Criminal Justice Committee hearing with Counsel Flaherty, we discussed youth violence, public health services, public safety, and I declared that treating gun violence was a public health emergency and that we need to treat it this way. Looking through a public health lens will allow researchers, including researchers in Boston, to study this issue and to see what other opportunities and programs, services are available with this declaration. In Boston, there have been 21 fatal shootings and about 120 non-fatal shootings so far this year. Recent incidents of gun violence remind us that there is significant work to do in terms of gun violence prevention, intervention, and recognizing gun violence as a public health emergency will help raise awareness and elevate this issue to facilitate the attention and urgency it is required. It will allow our dedicated and professional city departments in the Boston Public Health Commission to work together to develop strategies to reduce and prevent gun violence. So I hope that declaring gun violence as a public health emergency, we could have better research, we could have more funding for the city of Boston public health dealing with gun violence as the health emergency that it is. I hope my colleagues will join me in suspending and adopting this resolution. Thank you, Counsel Braden.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. You have the floor.
Gun violence takes the lives of 100 Americans per day in gun-related tragedies continue to surge from suicides to public mass homicides. Many health experts are calling for funding to study and combat firearm violence as a public health epidemic. As the Chair of Public Health, Mental Health, and Homelessness, I am proud to be a co-sponsor on this resolution with Council President Flynn and look forward to the work ahead to help combat this crisis we see playing out on our streets in Boston and unfortunately even in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, for highlighting this crisis. Gun violence has robbed too many families of their loved ones and left too many communities in a perpetual cycle of grief. While our current system may help individuals find justice after the fact, it is clear that we are not doing enough to prevent these incidents from happening in the first place. The numbers speaks for themselves. There have been 142 shootings since January 1st. Today is the 289th day of the year. This means that at least one Bostonian has been victimized by gun violence every other day. We know what works to prevent gun violence. In fact, we've done it before. The Boston miracle reduced youth homicides by 63% in just two years. It became a national model. Other cities are protecting their communities by doing what Boston did. Boston, on the other hand, abandoned this program and has paid the price ever since. Boston must lead once again. We know that jobs and education's work to break down the systems that feed violence. We know that public health models help stop violence before it spreads. And we know that we do, we know that we must do, that we support families and communities after a shooting is important in breaking cycles as what we do before. Thank you for bringing this issue up, and it's time to be urgent and get more resources to the communities that are affected most by gun violence. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Worrell. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. I wasn't going to speak on this matter, but I felt moved to honor the memory of my cousin who I never met, Matthew Murray, who was lost by an unintentional and accidental firearm injury. And so I just want to say his name on the floor. But we know one life is too many. One gun in the hands of our youth are too many. And we've seen an increase in gun violence in Charlestown, and so we're all taking that very seriously. And so I just want to thank the BPD and youth advocates who are doing this incredible work and just know that this is very personal to me, so I just want to thank you for putting this board.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter?
I'd also just like to say a few words. Counsel Flynn referenced that two decades ago that the CDC was banned from researching gun violence. I came here as a physical therapist in 1995, and I worked, my first job was at Boston University Hospital, and we had a presentation by the Boston BU-
presentation by the Boston BU School of Public Health, and that was the very subject that we were discussing. And then shortly thereafter, the schools of public health were banned from doing research into the causes of gun violence, largely due to the pressure from the gun lobby and the firearms industry to not do the research. And there's so much preventative work that can be done to understand how gun violence comes about and the causes for it and the remedies for it. So I wholeheartedly support this resolution today. Would, who, Council Flynn seeks suspension of the rules. Hang on. Would anyone else looking to speak on this matter, would anyone else like to add their name? Council Royal, Council Baker, Council Bach, Council Coletta, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Louie Jean, Council Mahia, and Council Worrell. And my name, please. Council Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of this resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This document has been adopted. Thank you.
I want to apologize to my colleagues for going out of order, the last one. I think Council Flaherty came up behind me and changed the numbers around, so I think we have to blame Council Flaherty on that. Mr. Clerk, can we please read document 12, we'll go to 1283.
Document number 1283, Council Fernandez Anderson offered the following: resolution recognizing Masha Amini birthday, September 23rd, as the day of women's right to self-expression, Boston's hijab day.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair recognizes. Yeah, yeah. The chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President and Mr. Clerk. For the past few weeks, people of good conscience or a month or so from around the world have joined in protest, the thousands across Iran, demanding justice for Maksah Amini, the 22-year-old Kurdish Iranian woman who died after three days in custody of Iran's notorious morality police. After being accused of not properly covering her hair, these protests in the heart of Iran have featured brave women burning their scarves and cutting their hair in the face of arrest, abuse, and in some cases even death, to show their solidarity with Amini's family and their will for freedoms and access to a joyful life absence suppression, absence of suppression from an oppressive state. Unfortunately, many people have taken these protests as an opportunity to slander Islam, the Iranian culture, for further silence, and further silence the voice of women across the world. We can never forget the goal of obtaining justice for Amini. First and foremost, there is what these protests are about. That is what these protests are about. But many have rightly come to see Amini's death as symbolic of something more, more to, and we cannot allow misogyny, Islamophobia, or racism to distract us from this point. The Iranian public understands this issue, is not an isolated one, and the widespread participation of women, of young Iranian men protesting shows the forms of protest, particularly the burning of headscarves, hijab, or hijab, and cutting off their hair are not rejections of faith, but rejection of the country's heavy-handed response to dissent, laws restricting women's rights, and the loss of self-determination. Those who miss this point or try to characterize this as a rejection of Islam either don't understand or don't want to understand. You don't have to go far in the Quran to learn there is no compulsion in religion. To say that hijab, or veil, or scarf, in and of themselves, oppresses women without redirecting the same energy towards yarmulke or say a priest's frock, it is to say that the source of women's power, but not a man's, is her body and not her mind. That is misogyny, and it's disgusting. A woman's dress code is a uniform like any other and represents one way a person may choose to express their faith. And the wearing or not wearing the hijab has long been a tool for Muslim women to express their opposition of paternalistic and oppressive regimes across the world. In fact, in the early 20th century, the Sheikh of Iran actually banned the hijab and was met with resistance across the country, causing many to be arrested while frocking their scarves in protest. Similar responses emerged after France banned head coverings and the burkini. Even here in America, many Muslim women began wearing the hijab for the first time as it emerged as a symbol of resistance to rising Islamophobia, visually expressing unity with Muslims across the nation. So to presume a woman wears a veil out of force without asking or understanding her reason is both racist and sexist. This world has often tried to control that women, what women can wear, and wielding power over women has become the primary way a state chooses to express power over its population. All you have to do is look at our current battle over a woman's rights of choice and reproductive health here in America. Slut shaming, forced veil or unveiling, and any other expression of cultural violence against women is a crime against humanity. Let's remember that the next time we want to let women, to tell women what she can and cannot do with her own body. I'd like to just take a few seconds to kindly show you the difference, and it'll be quick. This is called a kamar. Shout out to my Somali sisters for their kamar. It's just a simple scarf, and it just goes over your head and you pull it off. Simple. The one that goes to the floor may be a burka, but, or a prayer garment. This, when you see it this way, you'll call it hijab. You'll be like, oh, what's that called? A hijab? No, actually, I'm not Arab. It's just called a scarf. But for translation purposes, hijab also means veil, scarf, or protection. And then you have, this is called the niqab, and it goes over here and wrap, and you'll see women covering, and you'll see just their eyes. It's just basically an expression and a struggle. Anything that we call a struggle, a sacrifice, is considered a jihad, a sacrifice of self, so that you are forced to deal with self and not your beauty or your outer appearance. I, an African girl, or woman, I like to think, you know, I'm still young, I wear, I take my scarf and I put it in a bun. It's simple. Maksah Amini said, I'll just wrap it around. It's not a big deal. It's just a scarf. You see? Whether I wear it or I don't, it's my choice. I choose to wear a bun. Most Muslim women around the world don't wear hijabs. Most Muslim women express because Islam or submission to faith is in your heart, your character, and how you behave. So I thank you so much for indulging me in this kind of educational resolution, and I ask you to suspend and pass this today. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fernandez Anderson. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Council Louie Jean. Council Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Mr. President, I just rise to say to please enthusiastically add my name. This is a value of representation. We learn so much. I'm so glad that young Muslim women have you to look to and look up to, and for framing this as a woman's right to choose, whether in Iran it's your, the right to choose to wear, not to wear a head covering. And in India, they're fighting for their right to wear one. The fight continues in France and across the world. So I'm just so grateful to have you here on the council and to have us be able to learn so much and to stand in solidarity with the women around the world who are fighting for their right to choose in whatever way that, form that takes. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Louie Jean. I would like, I would like to add, the chair recognizes Council Mahia.
And I know Councilor others, so I wasn't sure who was first, but thank you.
The chair recognizes Council Mahia.
Thank you. So I just want to thank my sister. It is beautiful, right? Because we have an opportunity to educate those who are also tuning in. So I just want to rise in gratitude for helping us understand and celebrate. So it is, it is an honor to serve alongside you, and I really do appreciate all that you bring into this floor. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Mahia. The chair recognizes Council Royal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to also thank Council Fernandez Anderson for both her eloquence, but also the strength and power in which she informs while raising up issues that are deeply, deeply important. And so I stand in solidarity with you and on this issue. And so thank you for taking the time to really walk people through what all of these different things mean to people individually. I think it speaks to the power of diversity and inclusion on this body, but it also speaks to the power of having your specific voice on this council floor. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council Royal. I also wanted to highlight and thank especially Councilor Fernandez Anderson for, for her thoughts and her, her education, educating us on some of the important aspects of her religion. So we use this body here to educate people, especially people that are watching on television. So I want to say thank you to you, Council Fernandez Anderson. I had the opportunity, two weeks ago, I was talking to Council Fernandez Anderson. I visited the Islamic Society of Boston Cultural Center and had an opportunity to meet with many of the leaders at the church. And that was some of the, that was one of the issues we talked about. We also talked about hate crimes against immigrants across our city and across our country, including hate crimes against the Muslim community. I lived in a Muslim country for about seven, seven months as well. So just want to say thank you to Councilor Fernandez Anderson for providing important information that will help us be better city councils as well. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Royal, Council Bach, Council Brayden, Council Coletta, Council Flaherty, Council Louie Jean, Council Mahia, Council Worrell. Please add the chair.
Council Fernandez Anderson is seeking suspension of the rules and adoption of document 1283. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The document has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, can we go to document 1278, please?
Document number 1278, Councilor Fernandez Anderson offered the following: order for a hearing to discuss the need for a health center in Nubian Square.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. The health of our citizens is of utmost concern, but as it currently stands, there are glaring health disparities and inequities consisting, consistent with racism and class inequity. It is damning but all too true that there are parts of Roxbury where the average expectancy is 59 years old, and merely a half a mile away in Back Bay, life expectancy is 92 years old. There is 33 years difference in life expectancy between people living a half a mile apart. Of two, of 224 nations on this earth, only 16 have shorter life expectancy than people of Roxbury. In Roxbury and North Dorchester, the asthma rates approach 20%, and hospitalizations rates of the ailment are nearly 80% higher than the city's overall average. Furthermore, black residents of Massachusetts have more than twice the rate of diabetes compared to the white residents, and more than four times of many diabetes-related emergency department visits. Additionally, the Nubian Square area and its surrounding communities is currently suffering from an opioid epidemic, which has contributed to increased homelessness, mental health crisis, and other problematic indicators pertaining to the social, emotional, and physical health of people in the area. Because of these compelling matters, Nubian Square is in need of a state-of-the-art, culturally competent health center. The Nubian Square Center, or the Nubian Square Health Center, would offer not only quality standard medical treatment, but would also offer the essential health services and providers, such as nutritionists, athletic trainers, yoga instructors, and musical and artistic healers, among others, need, resources, and support. I look forward to holding a hearing with people from various health sectors, such as Boston Public Health Commission, doctors, nurses, and holistic providers, to be able to explicate the need for such a center and why Nubian Square's logistical, logistical location for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fernandez Anderson. The chair recognizes Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please add my name enthusiastically. Obviously, as a longtime advocate and recognized champion for our community health centers, we boast some of the best community health centers in the world. If you think about where our community's health centers are in our neighborhoods, and you think about what's happening around them, their connection clearly to helping support and provide good, excellent quality health care for some of the most vulnerable residents. But you also look at our neighborhoods and our business districts and all the things that sort of flow as a direct result from a good, strong community health center. So again, please add my name. Look forward to working with my colleague to hopefully make that a reality in Nubian Square, working with the League of Community Health Centers as well as other advocates. I think it's a great idea and wholeheartedly support it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. The chair recognizes Council Baker. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to, to sign on and also shout out my community in Dorchester where the, where the community health center movement started, very first one Columbia Point, wrapped around Columbia Point Housing Development, St. Christopher's Parish. Then we had an appallset health center, second one wrapped around a business district, St. Anne, St. Brendan's Parishes. And then we have the Little House Health Center, which my mother and her friends actually started, formed. My father and his friends did the construction on it, St. Margaret's Parish, and then we have, we have many more. So I signed on to this as, as someone that benefited from the community center, the community health centers that were in my district. My mother started it, started, her reason for wanting a, a community health center in St. Margaret's Parish, because that's how we identified by our parishes, that's what we did anyway, that villages are wrapped around the parishes, for anybody that doesn't know, was because it was during the 70s, early 70s, when we saw an explosion of unwed mothers, some in my family also. And my mother's, my mother's role at that health center, my mother, my mother only went to the fifth grade, fifth grade education. Her father was illiterate. Her role was to help to nurture those young women that had new babies and show them how to love their babies, show them how to breastfeed. So I do this as much to honor my mother and my family and also to lend support for Nubian Square. If they need a health center, we should be trying to build one for them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Baker. I would also like to speak on this matter as well. I certainly support this initiative, and it's desperately needed in Nubian Square. I want to say thank you to Council Fernandez Anderson for bringing this forward. And I think the first hearing I had was with, five years ago, was with Council Kim Janey, and it was on health disparities.
years ago, was with Counselor Kim Janey, and it was on health disparities in communities of color. And Counselor Janey, now, after Mayor Janey, we talked about the, the health disparities, especially women, African-American women in, in Boston. But it was, this is desperately needed. I had the opportunity to visit the South Boston Community Health Center on, on Monday. An excellent program. The South End has an excellent program. They're, they're partnered with the East Boston Community Health Center. South Cove in my district is excellent, along with, along with the Fenway Community Health Center, which I share with Counsel Bark and I think Counselor Braden as well. Anyway, would anyone else like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Royal, Counselor, Counselor Baker, Counsel Bark, Counselor Braden, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Wu Zhen, Counselor Mehea, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Wurall. Please add the Chair. Docet 1278 will be referred to the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 1279, please.
Doc number 1279, Counselor Fernandez Anderson offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss how the Boston Public Schools can more effectively support the needs of its Muslim students.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. May I please add Counsel Wu Zhen and Counselor Mehea to this order, as co-sponsors?
Counsel Wu Zhen and?
Counselor Mehea.
Counselor Mehea, they're, they're added. Hearing no objection. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Thank you so much. First, before I begin, I'd like to say just a few, a couple words of gratitude to my sister, Salaam Waalaikum, Farah Gerlt, who's in the audience, who I've had the privilege to have many conversations, or some conversations about the educational system, engagement, parent involvement, and how we can support our students and family overall to create a healthy environment towards their academic success. I thank you for your tenacity in this work, and always representing all of the children in BPS. Thank you so much for being here and sharing this moment with me. Followers of Islam make up the second biggest religion group of students who attend our schools. They need to be serviced and supported by culturally competent educators who are aware of how to honor their identities, allowing them to flourish in the manner they are entitled to. Likewise, our Muslim students are deserving of faculties, food, bathrooms, and respect for their religious needs that are often, there are too often lacking at the current moment. Additionally, many Muslim students in Boston and beyond suffer from bullying and harassment on a consistent basis. In the Boston Globe article from last year, 61% of Muslim students polled in Boston and in the surrounding schools say that they have been bullied. And in 14, and 14% don't feel comfortable telling their peers that they are Muslim. Additionally, 40% said that they have heard a Muslim student being physically harassed at school, and 17% of those surveyed say that they themselves have had their hijabs pulled or tugged or taken off. So firstly, more must be done to condemn and stem systemic, the, stem the systemic that this religion, that this religious bullying being meted out of Muslim students. But there is no more. The facilities in BPS must be improved or utilized in a manner that honors the students, of its Muslim students and all students. Our practicing Muslim students need designated spaces where they are, they can pray during the school day. This is mandatory for us. This is their right as a law, as long as they are unobtrusive. It is imperative that these spaces be either located or created. Students have shown that religious involvement can play an important role in mental health, especially among marginalized ethnic communities. So it is imperative that the identity of Muslim students be so recognized and respected. The generic dietary options currently made available to BPS students are not, are often not options for Muslim youth to, to partake in. This creates conditions in which Muslim students either must abstain from said options or bring their own food. Dietary options offered by BPS that are fully edible to its Muslim students would go a long way showing that fully invested in the health and education of Muslim students. And there are, I can, I could go on and on, and I, in an interest of respecting time, I wanted to just list sort of in numbers. During Ramadan, for example, where we fast, and it's a dry fast, it's not, we're not allowed to drink water or food, or abstain from certain behaviors, as well as bathroom, using facilities. Not sure if you guys have seen the stand-up comedian Mo on Netflix, but he talks about how the whole world, the Muslims are watching the whole world and saying, why aren't you washing with water and soap after you use the bathroom? This is actually mandatory for us to be clean. We can't pray unless we wash with water and soap every single time you use the bathroom. So something as, something as seen as minute as that is actually mandatory for Muslims. Our schools play an important role in teaching each other, fostering full, flowering identities. I think that teaching also culturally competent religious awareness or understanding people's culture in our practices could go a long way, and hopefully work on addressing these bullying issues. Because of this, I look forward to a hearing with Boston Public Schools administrators, the Chief of Equity and Inclusion, the Senior Advisor for Youth in Schools, educators, religious leaders, and other concerned entities, to ensure that our Muslim students are being properly attended to and treated in, in, with fairness in our Boston Public Schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson. The Chair recognizes, the Chair recognizes Counsel Wu Zhen. Counsel Wu Zhen, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you again, Fernandez Anderson, Counsel Fernandez Anderson, for your leadership here. I think, I'm looking forward to this hearing to learn more, to see how we can make sure that our schools are practicing inclusivity and creating safe spaces for our Muslim students. I think in that same report that you quoted from the Boston Globe, a third of Muslim students hide the fact that they're Muslim, or their appearance, or their name, just so that they can have somewhat of a comfortable schooling experience. And that's not okay. We want people to be able to show up in schools as their true and full selves. And so if there's more, and there is more, that we can be doing at BPS to make people comfortable, whether they're wearing a head covering or not, learning about their culture and the contributions to our city here is always critically important. So I thank you for filing this hearing order, and I'm looking forward to holding this hearing alongside BPS to learn more.
Thank you, Counsel Wu Zhen. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mehea. Counsel Mehea, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and a shout out to Farah. We've been working together for many, many decades, it feels like, around school culture and climate. But this is one of the first times that I think that we're actually really doing a deeper dive around some very specific cultural norms that we need to tackle in Boston Public Schools. So I'm grateful to both Counselor Anderson and yourself for bringing this into the space and working alongside us to hold ourselves accountable to how we're going to create this type of environments that really embrace our students and create space for them to be fully expressed. I would say, you know, that in 2001, I lived in New York during 9/11. And I would have to say that during that time, I saw the hostility. And I used to work at MTV, so you know, I used to work with young people. So, at the time, there was a lot of work being done across the country around how do we create space for folks? And I feel like that was 20 something years ago, and it feels like that was so long ago. But still, the impact of that, that residue still exists. And I think it's really important for us to acknowledge that. And I, and I think, you know, what really stood out to me in terms of just really simple things, the fact that we're not doing those simple things right now speaks volumes to how much work we need to do in, in terms of creating the type of environment where young people can actually live out, you know, the, the things that they need to do as part of their culture and their religion, right? The fact that we don't have dedicated spaces and places for young people to be able to pray, that's crazy, right? That is a simple fix. And that's not something that we can, we don't have to wait to, to, to make happen. We could just say, hey. And I'd like to know when Boston Public Schools comes here for the hearing, is how many spaces are already dedicated? So they better come with that data, because I know you like to hear those numbers. So those, for those who are tuning in from Boston Public Schools, know that these are the sort of questions that we're going to ask. And we're hoping that you come here with some solutions, and things that, that are quick fixes that we can do right now, that do not have to wait and make our young people wait any, anymore for the things that they need. So, thank you, Counselor Anderson, for adding me to be a sponsor alongside you. And I look forward to hosting this in the Education Committee, so we can move things along as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Counsel Mehea. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Royal, Counsel Bark, Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Wurall, please, Counsel Murphy, please add the Chair. Docet 1279 will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 1280.
Docet number 1280, Counsel Flaherty offered the following: Order for a hearing regarding the distribution of drug paraphernalia in the New Market area of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'll try to be as brief as possible, because I don't have the time to debate. The Public Health Commission will be at the hearing, and I know that our colleague has invited us, along with the Jewish community, to attend an event. So I know we're pressed for time. Obviously, want to start with respect to how defeating it was to hear about the Boston Public Health Commission and some of their partners distributing drug kits, cookers, crack pipes, and meth pipes over in the Mass and Cass area. I'll start by saying that I'm on board. I've fully supported and funded the needle exchange program, very successful. Boston probably distributes about a million needles a year, give or take. And the good news is, is we actually get more than what we distribute back. So the program is clearly working. I've also supported and funded the mobile shops team and the great work that they do. Frankly, we probably need more of them. We should probably consider increasing funding there. Also supported the co-response, as it pertains to mental health with our Boston Police and our Boston Public Health Commission, as well as supporting and funding a whole other, another, a whole bunch of other initiatives designed to trying to put people's lives back on track, to get folks clean and sober, and to get them the mental health and the treatment and recovery that they need. But did not sign up for our Boston Public Health Commission overseeing passing out cookers to take the powdered form of fentanyl, one of the most dangerous drugs, if not the most dangerous drug on the market, or at least out in the street, and then to provide the other cooking and consumption materials. I don't think anybody would agree that that's making Mass and Cass any safer. In fact, to report, the first 10 months of 2022, there's been over 34,000 calls for service, over 21,000 for police, over 4,000 for fire, and over 8,000 for EMS. Violent crime is up 15%. I got to think there's a correlation between crack and, and methamphetamine in those numbers. And so, some folks will talk about, well, it's harm reduction, and it's reducing the spread of HIV and AIDS. And I'll disclose once again, I'm supportive of the needle exchange program, and that we do give over a million needles a year, and we get more of them back. This isn't about that. This is about helping people get treatment and recovery. No one over in that area is getting treatment and recovery. No one is getting their life back on track. And the letters, the emails, the phone calls, I've got heartbreaking from mothers who have sons and daughters over there. And they're over there on a regular basis, looking for their son, looking for their daughter. And what they're seeing over there is absolutely heartbreaking. The phone calls I've gotten over the last several days, the emails I've gotten, happy to share them with folks and with their experiences. And one of the things that the common denominator, most of the mothers talked about, is when they learned that their son or daughter had this addiction, the first thing they learned was, you're not supposed to enable, don't allow your son or daughter to come do drugs at home, or to be present at home or around your family. And I think one of our colleagues probably can speak to that better than anybody. And they've lived by that, making sure that it's the tough-love piece of it, and making sure that they're trying to steer their child to treatment and recovery. And the common denominator for all those mothers that have contacted my office is that they feel that the Boston Public Health Commission is enabling their own son and daughter. They were told not to do it, their son or daughter can go over there, get their drug of choice, and the city, Boston Public Health Commission, and their partners will provide the drug paraphernalia to allow you to ingest, or to snort, or to shoot. And so, look forward to the hearing. Need to hear from the good doctor and her team over the Boston Public Health Commission, how they think that this is a good idea for Boston, how they think that that's helping folks get treatment and recovery, how they think it's going to make that area safer. There's residents over there, there's businesses over there, there's employees over there. Everybody in this room wants to help. Everybody is sickened by what's happening over there. And again, nothing was more defeating to me personally to hear that, you know, that there's a distribution of, of cookers, crack pipes, and meth pipes. It's unconscionable. And so, I would love for someone in the public health sector to tell me how they think that's a good idea. And one last thing, when you get these kits, if you notice them, and if you've ever seen them, no business card in there, no brochure in there, no one tapping you on the shoulder, asking you if you want treatment or recovery, or if you need a detox opportunity, you're almost just, I use the expression, you're in line, and they're almost, as they're passing the kit, they're looking behind you to see, you know, almost like you're at a deli counter at Stop &amp; Shop. That has to stop. And I think the residents, the people, the families have loved ones over there, they deserve it in the now. And what they're crying out is they're saying that they think that we're enabling the city, the Boston Public Health Commission, is enabling that environment there, when them themselves, the family members, the brothers, the sisters, the parents, the grandparents, have been told that that's not what you're supposed to do. It runs counter to that. If we're going to work together on this, if we're going to clean up the, the, the area for businesses, for residents, but more importantly, if we're going to get folks back on track, get the wheels back on their bus, get them treatment and recovery, get them sober, get them thinking straight, because the way it's working right now, no one over there is getting, getting that. In fact, they're not able to think rationally, they're not able to make healthy choices for themselves. And so we, obviously, in government, and their respective family members, and other organizations and outreach groups, are trying to do that. But when you're passing out cookers, crack pipes, and meth pipes, it's like, what are we doing here? We're just banging our heads against the wall. And there's a reason why, Mr. President, there's a reason why the numbers have grown over there. It's a big, come on over, come on in. They're coming from everywhere. 85% of the folks over there are not from Boston. They're coming from communities all over the place. Why? Because we're giving them the materials to do it. Why? You also get 10 bucks. Every, every dirty, every dirty needle you turn in, you get 10 bucks for. There's a little bit of a, little bit of a hustle going on over there, you know? And not, and then not to mention what's going on over at South Bay Mall, all those businesses and the employees that, what they have to endure over there, stuff getting stolen on a regular basis to make a quick turn, make a quick buck, right back over to Mass and Cass. So, enough said on it. Again, look forward to the discussion, look forward to the debate, look forward to other people's ideas, but nothing, again, was more defeating and disheartening to hear that Boston Public Health Commission is overseeing the distribution of cookers, crack pipes, and meth pipes over at Mass and Cass. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please sign me on. Denial is not a river in Egypt. That's what we're doing. We're denying what's happening down there. That's an AA saying, too, by the way. My mother was an enabler. My brother Ricky died 30 years ago. March will be 30 years, his, his anniversary, heroin overdose. He was probably in, I don't know, 25 or more detoxes, could never get it together, hated himself more than, more than anybody on the planet. Everybody loved my brother Ricky. He hated himself for whatever, for whatever reason. And that heroin was his painkiller, the pain that, for whatever reason, he was unhappy with himself. It was heroin that he used to stamp down his, his feelings. And my family, when he, when he overdosed, it was still, you want to talk stigma, it was still, oh geez, you can't say that your brother overdosed, you know, unforeseen circumstances. We put in the Globe obituary, Ricky Baker overdosed on heroin, because we knew it was a problem. We had it in our family, and it was spreading. Back then, there was very, very few outward heroin addicts. Now, now all you got to go down Mass and Cass, and it's, we are providing, basically, the ability to, for people to lay around on the street, shoot up, whatever they want to do. You got your drugs, you can process- You got your drugs, you can prostitute this woman here, you can stab this guy, you can do that, you can do all those things. But now we're putting them in hotels and we're just going to grow the problem. And on top of growing the problem, people just sending their people to us, the money that we're going to look back and say, oh geez, what we just spent on this? If we can get a straight answer out of across the hall, they're upwards of 20-plus million at Just the Roundhouse, 300 people there. Brian's hopefully in six years going to get a community, well, Counsel Worell is hopefully going to get a community center in five or six years that'll help to prevent gun violence, right? Clarity Pool's going to need 20 to 30 million dollars to help that community in their ills. I had brought before this party right here, mostly voted against it, to have another center in Dorchester at Columbia Point, right? That would have been built in 18 months if we got the money when I asked for it. Now that's probably three or four years or whatever. But it seems to be, we don't have any problem dumping money into this. And when we say all options are on the table, it's not the truth. All options aren't on the table. We don't have a Section 35 program, we don't have a Section 12 program. And part of that, even just doing sweeps, is when people have, they have, you know, problems with the larves, they have warrants. You're going to go in front of a judge and the judge is going to say, look at this poor guy right here, he's got 20 warrants and not one of them really warrants anything other than drug treatment. So when we're not allowing the police to do their job, and when we close the satellite courthouse that we had over there, that would have, A, helped people clean up their warrants because one of the reasons why nobody wants to go back into regular life because they have all these warrants because they've been shooting poison in their veins for so long. So that courthouse could have used as, all right, come on in, let's clean your warrants up. And when we're cleaning your warrants up, where do you want to go to detox? So we have this discussion, we had it again last week about Clifford Park. And what do we come up with? Safe injection sites. It's the national agenda back here, safe injection sites. We're going to make this program that we're using, that we're pounding money into, spend, 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 spend on these people that are coming into our boundaries, while we're not spending on our kids, while we're not spending on Grove Hall, while we're not spending at Clarity Pool, certainly not spending in Columbia Point, what I asked for. But we're going to spend, spend, spend to put people on hospice. It's a five-year hospice down there, keep shooting them up with morphine, shooting them up until they die. No quality of life, no even thought of what tomorrow could look like. Could tomorrow be better? I'll tell you one thing, nobody wants to be down there, but they end up down there. Maybe someday, someone will feed me three squares and bring me Bud Lights for the rest of my life till I just drink myself to death. Not going to happen because when we were young, if you drank Bud Lights in the corner park, you got arrested. You got arrested for Bud Light and you got put in front of a judge. That wasn't right. So what's got to give here? We really going to have all options on the table or all options become double down with more harm reduction? Harm reduction. If you look at when we went heavy into harm reduction, the overdoses skyrocketed, the people that are on drugs skyrocketed, all your numbers, all your data, people, get a look at what's happened in the last 10, 15 years when we were double down on harm reduction. Everything's gone through the roof. We're losing people every day. My first term, every week it was one, two people, can you help my son, my daughter get into detox? I'm not really getting those calls anymore. It almost makes me feel like maybe the kids in our neighborhood learned the lesson because we lost a whole bunch of them in South Boston and in Dorchester. The guys that are probably around 35 in my neighborhood that I know, I know a bunch of them that have buried six, seven, eight friends. A lot of them, it was, oh, what a hockey player he was, hurt his neck, doctor prescribed him, ended up from over prescription eating the pills. If one makes you feel good, seven makes you feel great. That's the addict, that's what they do. They cannot help themselves. So us, bringing three squares and a case of Bud Light, it's no different. But I'm concerned, the more hearings we have like this, because there's cotton or something in the ears, it's going to end up being safe injection sites and it's going to be more comfort stations and it's going to be more, you can't touch them, you got to leave them alone there, and it's all other people. And we're not taking care of our kids right now, trying to get through COVID, trying to get through COVID. We should be investing in our children, not in flop houses like the Roundhouse, the Envision Hotel. I would venture to say, if you ever get a straight answer, that those places are total disasters, you know? And if we were ever to go over there and tour them, they'd be all cleaned up before we went there. Did you hear the stats? 34,000 in an area that's on our redistricting map, it's this big on our redistricting map, 34,000. What are we doing on our city budgets? At what point do we say, we got to do something a little different here? Nashville Street's sitting empty, could be repurposed as a real facility, real facility. We don't call it a jail, we call it a DPH facility. Section 8, Section 35s, Section 12s, right there, bring them in. And when you have, when you have the person who's on drugs and you find they can get them off maybe a week and they might have no more drugs in their system, they're still a screwed up unit. They still need months of therapy. They still need someone there in their face. Okay, what are you going to do now? What are you going to do now? Do you want to talk housing? Do you want to talk how we reunite you with your family? Do you want to talk what maybe you can do for a job? Because quite frankly, how do you go from a methamphetamine-induced psychosis, you go down there, there's people running around naked, spinning around? That's methamphetamine. How do you go from that to, okay, I'm going to go be a postal worker now? I don't think you do. So unless we do something real and change the way we're doing, we're all disruptors around here, everybody wants to disrupt and we got to change that system. The system that's in place now down there needs to be changed because it's not working. We're all on this treadmill and we have the people down there on hospice, five-year hospice. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the lead sponsor here. Please sign me on.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Would anyone else like to speak or add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clark, please add Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, please add Counselor Murphy, please add the Document 1280 will be referred to the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness and Recovery. We're on to personnel orders. Mr. Clark, please read document 1284, please.
Document number 1284, Counselor Flynn for Counselor Arroyo.
The Chair seeks suspension of rules and passage of document 1284. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the document has passed. Mr. Clark, please read document 1285.
Document number 1285, Counsel Flynn for Counselor Arroyo.
The Chair seeks suspension of rules and passage of document 1285. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the document has passed. Mr. Clark, please read document 1286.
Document number 1286, Counselor Flynn for Counselor Mihail.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of document 1286. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the document has passed. Mr. Clark, please read document 1287, please.
Document number 1287, Counsel Flynn for Counselor Mihail.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of document 1287. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the document has passed. We're on to late files. I'm informed by the clerk that there are three late file matters. The late file matters include a letter of absence from Counselor Lara, a personnel order, a message in order from the mayor for a $20,000 grant. The late file matter should be on everyone's desk. We will take a vote to add these items into the agenda. All those in favor of adding the late file matters into the agenda, say aye. Thank you, the late file matters are added. Mr. Clark, can you please read the first late file matter, which is a letter from Counsel
Letter from City Councilor Kendra Lara. Dear Council President Flynn, I am regretfully unable to attend today's council meeting. Both Zaire and I have been fighting off the flu since Monday and I am at home resting, hoping to recover in time to rejoin the redistricting working sessions later this week. Though I am not there, I like to voice my support for the community map sponsored by Councilors Braden and Arroyo. I am encouraged by community organizations who are committed to growing and maintaining their political power, coming together to collaboratively build a map for the future of Boston. If possible, please add my name. A member of my staff will be present to take notes and report to me as needed. I look forward to reviewing the recordings of the meeting. Sincerely, City Councilor Kendra Lara.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Can you read the second late file into the record, which is the personnel order? Yeah, okay. That letter from Counsel Lara, can you place that in file?
Personnel order, Counselor Flynn. Effective Saturday, October 22, 2022, the following named persons to be hereby appointed to the position set against their name on Friday, December 6, 2022.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the second late file matter has passed. Mr. Clark, the third late file matter into the record, which is the order from the mayor?
Dear Councilors, I hereby transmit for your approval an order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $20,020 in the form of a grant, El Centro Fellowship awarded by the Catholic Charities Archdiocese of Boston, to be administered by the Department of Innovation and Technology. The grant would fund the fellowship program for El Centro IT Training Program graduates. I urge your honorable body to adopt this order so the City of Boston may accept the funds expeditiously and expend them upon award for the purposes for which they are granted.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bach, the Chair of the Committee on City Services, Innovation Technology, Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I'm going to move for suspension and passage. This is a program that provides workforce development training in IT mainly for immigrants and folks who have often come to this country where they had white collar jobs back in their prior country, but now they're trying to sort of get established here. And so they go through the program and then these funds actually pay for us to have one of them as a fellow and do it. So it's a great kind of actual job after the training program and we'd love to see it funded so that somebody can be in that role. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel Bach seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the second late file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the third late file matter, sorry, has passed. We're on to the green sheets. Anyone wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. The Chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remove document number 1184, page 13 of, I believe, 19.
Mr. Clark, would you please read document 1184 into the record?
From the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, document number 1184. Communication was received from the city clerk transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for city council action on the designation of petition number 254.16, the Warren House, Roxbury, Mass., in effect after October 29, 2022, if not acted upon.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, can you please poll the committee members to see if they would allow the document to come before the body?
Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Worell. Counselor Braden. Counsel Lara. And Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you. Document 1184 is now properly before the body. Counselor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Boston Landmarks Petition Number 254.16, the Warren House, Roxbury, was unanimous vote of the Landmarks Commission. And some characteristic of the site is this is a Gothic Revival building comprised of a two-and-a-half-story cross-gabled main block, a two-story engabled rail wing at the east elevation, and a one-story engabled addition at the easternmost wall of the rail wing. The main block and the rail wings are constructed of local Roxbury pudding laid in random ashlar with granite trim. The Warren House is historically and architecturally significant as a habitable memorial structure built by descendants of the nationally important historical figure, Dr. Joseph Warren. Warren played a significant role in the lead-up to the Revolutionary War and drafted a document that is believed to have influenced the Declaration of Independence. He became the first high-ranking American officer killed in the war in the Battle of Bunker Hill during the Revolution. Several other members of the Warren family who were either born in or lived at this site made unprecedented contributions to the field of medicine. Today, counties in 14 states bear the name of Joseph Warren, as do four towns in New England. The structure constructed entirely of Roxbury pudding stone, a type of stone unique to eastern Massachusetts, and the building is one of the few pudding stone cottages in the city of Boston. It's a contemporary of the frayed Gothic cottages, still is distant along Montrose Street in the Morlin Street Historic District of Roxbury. Having considered all this, I respectfully recommend that this matter pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker moves for passage of document 1184. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, document 1184 has passed. We're on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there is one addition to the consent agenda. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye. Thank you, the consent agenda has been adopted. Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Baker, William Bill Brock. For Counselor Coletta, Jane Taglietta of Charleston. Mary May May Cardoza. Anthony DePietro. For Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Edna Green Willis Morel. For Counselors Flaherty, Flynn, Baker, Murphy, Meredith Knuff. For Counselors Flynn, Flaherty, Baker, Frank Mirasol. A moment of silence, please. The Chair moves that when we adjourn today, that we do so in those mentioned individuals. We are now scheduled to meet again in the Ionella Chamber on Wednesday, October 26, at 12:00 noon. Before we adjourn, I want to say thank you to the clerk, the assistant clerk. I want to say thank you to the clerk's office, city council, central staff, to my colleagues today for being very professional. We're dealing with very difficult issues, but just want to say thank you for conducting yourselves in the most respectful manner. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. The council is adjourned.